I love that picture of the room makes it look like a grand room.
Thank?
I do.
Okay, this is the December regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Oklahoma Beach Act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule of the board's regular meetings was sent to and published in the Esberry Park Press, was also sent to the two over tons of the Star Ledger. The next meeting was listed in the notice of the schedule of regular meetings. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and as you may continuously posted there as required by the statute. In addition, a copy of the notices has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with statutes. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the year. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants or experts in the audience about the role and authority that the fairman's on the board of adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in the Borough ordinances and the New Jersey municipal land use law. It's quasi-educational nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough area. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from their requirements to boroughs' land use laws or denial by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey municipal land use law and the fairman ordinances by satisfying a certain required standard of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to a specific relief requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to his own plan. Variants is related to the future use of land are not intended or authorized through any temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call please. Here, please join me to the flag.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three applications on the agenda for this evening. Mr. Rick Brodsky is trying to fashion this. First matter on the agenda is the Owens matter. Mr. Chair, this matter was carried or continued from earlier meeting the board, I believe it was the October 6th meeting without unnecessary notice. It's Mr. Brodsky's matter. We're sworn Mr. Kurt Rizor, our professional engineer at the last hearing on this, but kind of a bunch of talk I'm gonna do again. Mr. Rizzo, you just want to test my getting bored of your truth, all through none of the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. Mr. Brodsky, you put your parents on the line, please?
Yes, thank you. Rick Brodsky, law firm at Selvman Aaron on behalf of the applicants, Nick Owens and Lauren Corret.
Is there anything you want to mark in advance? You want to mark as we go?
Mr. Irene, I think we need to mark the one set of plans. There are a couple of corrections that were made to the plan, so it's slightly different.
Okay, I think, and you can check me and Sandy can check me, I think we are up to A dash four.
That's what I have.
All right, so this is the, are these the second floor addition? They originally captured a second floor addition plan. Are they still captured that way?
There's no longer a second.
I know. We're marking captures.
For the record, what is, how do you have? Same as what's been released submitted.
Yeah, yeah. So, but how is the plan captured? Just like in reference to?
The only change is the same one of the numbers that we kept.
Right, what's the name?
What's the name of the plan?
Name of the plan is the forty-five Second Street.
So still said second floor.
Okay, no, it's okay. So it says second floor addition plan. And prepared by Mr. Jackson, and how many sheets? There were originally ten. There are seven now? Seven?
It's the same number.
Okay, seven sheets. And what's the last revision date on that plan, please? November eighteen? Okay, that's A dash four. Thank you.
M H's.
Eight sheets, eight sheets, eight sheets. Thank you. Mr. Brodsky?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, as Mr. Irene indicated, when we were here last time back in August, back in October, the, it was a somewhat different application. The applicant at the time was seeking approvals for the construction of a two-story addition in the rear of the property in the existing single family structure. Properties located forty-five seconds, forty-five seconds free here in ten, the R five zone. So it was a second floor, a two-story addition that was proposed for the rear as well as as a covered porch. Board will recall, we have, we have an oversized lot here, sixty-two hundred forty-eight foot feet here in the R five zone. The, we heard some feedback and we had some give and take between and amongst board members and Mr. Jackson and myself. And as a result, we, the applicants kind of went back to the drawing board to a certain extent, met with Mr. Jackson and tried to figure out how to, on the one hand, you know, address, respond to concerns and comments raised by the board while at the same time, you know, seeking to sort of be able to get what they need for the family.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about who was here last time. Or we, before continuing, I want to make sure that we know who is here. Anyone that wasn't here, that they removed the tape. We have a head count on that. I assume we're not starting over again, correct?
Correct.
So is there anyone that was not here in October?
I was not here in October. I did not read the tape, but I don't believe I would be voting either way.
Because we have seven, we have a full board without Mr. Shavetti as our alternate. And you're the alternate, so you can participate in the discussion, but you won't be voting, so that's fine. Anyone else? Everyone else was here. All right, great.
Okay, and so, yes, and so the plan was revised and Mr. Jackson will walk the board through, but, and, and, and basically what the highlights of the changes, as you'll hear, is that we removed the second floor, the two-story addition, and we're proposing just a single-story addition coming out of the east side of the existing structure. We're also, in order to keep, keep that that floor area down, we removed a portion of the existing home on the opposite side, on the west side of the home. And what this enables us to do was to, you know, achieve an expansion of the family room for, for the family. And the portion of the first story that's being reduced, which currently is the family room, probably be too small for a family room, is now going to be converted to an office, an office use for, for the, for the owners, both of whom were from home, one about a hundred percent of the time, one about eighty percent of the time. So, so the driving force was always achieve some additional living space, primarily motivated by getting some office, some at-home office space. And still remaining within the sections of the ordinance as much as possible. And so you'll see floor area went down significantly and numbers of variances previously needed have been removed. And you're going to see that at the end of the day, while we do still need relief from the maximum floor area, we're proposing two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine square feet over the twenty-three hundred and sixty-four that exists there today. And twenty-two hundred is permitted in the zone. Unless the board has any other, oh, and also, we also set back or kind of offset the proposed addition. There's an existing non-conformity with respect to side setbacks for the existing home. Slight, but still, an existing non-conformity. We stepped back the addition so that the addition holds the required setbacks and doesn't exacerbate the existing non-conformity that, that pertains to the existing structure. Same three bedrooms will result as exist today. And I think that covers basically the overview of what we have. So what I'd like to do, unless the board has any questions, if we can have our architect go ahead, Mr. Jackson, walk the board through the revisions in a little bit more detail and show the board exactly what's being proposed under the revised plan.
Mr. Jackson, you were sworn last time, but I'm just gonna put you on the roof. Can you just want to test my getting bored of your truth, all through none of the truth? Just give us your full name, please.
Earl Jackson.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Earl, if you would, as I indicated, if you could just walk the board through the proposed plan. Now, you've, you've marked this as A four, the revised plan. That was submitted, right? But you made a couple of corrections, right, on some of the numbers, which is the only difference in between what's been marked as a board and what's been submitted to the board, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's walk the board through the revised plan and we'll go from there.
So to start with the change, working with Mr. Rizzo, a little bit of discrepancy between our calculations. What's noted in your plans as seventeen hundred and eleven, total proposed is actually seventeen ninety-eight. For both building, proposed building coverage. The total still rises to twenty-eight point seven eight, which is well below the thirty-five percent that's required. So we're in danger there. Existing lot coverage, that number then falls into that, so there's a small change there. Still below the fifty percent required of the ordinance. Those are the two. I have a larger site plan just to help walk through the changes since the last time we met. Previously, it was an addition that came all the way out to the rear setback line. What we've done, and we, and we tried to build, post an attic above that existed living space to accommodate the need for the office. It can, Lauren, I recently had a second child. What is there currently? Third room on the second floor, which was used as an office before, now it's to be a veterans. This is where the pressure for this, this extra space comes from. We posted above, in order to make a decent side room off the dining room, which is here, and to stay within the point four F A R limits, we've removed, or planning to remove, a small portion of that existing space so that room is minimally functional at ten foot by fifteen foot wide room. And we've taken the balance of that space that's been decanted and added to the allowable space that they had under the point four cap to create a living space adjacent to the dining. There are steps in the house that go from this level to the old garage, which is, we discussed the last time we were here. We like this room for a couple of reasons. Now that extra living space with the space of the family room becomes the office, is immediately adjacent to the dining room, which is also mainly adjacent to the kitchen, so with little children, they don't have to go downstairs into a separate room. Think that it may have been a fortuitous benefit to go through the last hearing with you. You, we misinterpreted the way that the second floor would be counted. Such, we revisited the plan, added the space in the first one, I think it's gonna be more functional as well. There is some additional cost that comes with this approach. We're no longer building up or existing structures now that have seen the foundation extension required. Wants you to be excited about this, regardless of the additional cost of construction. There were questions raised, I think, in Mr. Rizzo's memo about overhangs and projections. One of the things we did, as a result of our last conversation, we had a front step that was twelve inches beyond the front yard setback. We then took that in within the limit of course. With that stuff. Question that was, was the eve of the front porch, it does extend eleven and a quarter inches by plan over the front yard setback. Well, if we believe on that projection, otherwise the front porch really is not changed other than that step and recognizing question.
I want to understand what the, the front step, so that the house as it sits doesn't have a front porch. So the proposal was to build a front porch out effectively to the front yard setback.
That's correct.
I think that what we had identified was that the front yard setback as proposed would be measured to the step. Re-sess it.
We recessed it, so the original step was here. Proud of the line of the setback which is there. And we just cut it in so that there's no discrepancy.
And what are the dimensions on the, on the porch as proposed?
The dimensions on the porch are about eight feet from the main structure to the base of porch and post. Twenty-seven feet wide. Limit of that width is governed by, sorry, not sixty percent.
And you have two bay windows projecting out onto the, the two bay windows are existing. The space of that goes all the way to the floor. We've calculated floor area to make sure that we're counting that in the new calculations for floor area. I think we've got that covered. So what I want to understand is, I want to understand the utility of the porch as it's going to be changed. You know, the, the discussion that we had last time was about calculations being accurate. The decision to move it back is certainly yours, but I don't know that anyone suggested that it would be unreasonable to request variance if in fact it makes sense relative to the porch. But you push through it so quickly, I just want to make sure that you're not sacrificing a usable front porch. Because the measurement aside, you know, you're looking to put a porch on for a reason and, you know, I would expect you want to be confused.
At eight foot from the front door to the edge of the porch, even with a twelve or fourteen inch stripe, you're still close to seven feet with a three-foot door swing. You still have four feet length. We're creating a force that's not functional.
Okay.
On the front porch, are there any other questions or issues? It's a minor change from the previous submission.
Coming back to the, if you go to the page eight zero five zero, real quick, just go back one, I think. Want to, to understand, so the right-hand side, which is that left part, right, that, you have the answer, okay, cool. So that goes away. So does your minimum rear yard setback decrease?
The rear yard setback increases. In the previous submission, you're right up to the thirty-foot line. Let's see, the fraction of an inch.
Yeah.
Now the rear yard setback is increased from existing another six foot.
Tens why you're at forty-six feet, right, check, check, perfect, telling you, thank you.
Is the first floor addition on the same side as the driveway?
Yes.
And the driveway is a shared, it's a, it, there's, there's a tandem driveway there between, between your home and the, and the neighbor's home.
Yes. And Earl, with regard to that addition, I mentioned the setbacks, because if you could just walk, just walk through that.
Yeah. On the west side of the house, currently have, this is, two setbacks in the property line. Not exacerbating that, I think that by pulling it back, the house actually reducing that existing condition by another six feet, so it's less imposing on the neighbors. You see that as improvement. One of the questions raised by Mr. Rizzo was not only the individual side yard setbacks, but the overall combined needs to be a total of sixteen feet. What we've done with the addition is we've folded in an additional five and a half inches so that even the new piece is not approaching or creating an issue with the overall sixteen foot required setback. So we're five point two on the existing condition side, although we have non-conformity. Nine foot setbacks, that's required if we're holding seven foot minimum on the other side, plus another one foot ten. Gives us an even sixteen feet for that addition from the problem.
I'm gonna ask a similar question to what I asked the porch. I don't think the board's looking for conformity for conformity's sake. Moving the addition in five and a half inches, what's the consequence of that with regard to design and cause?
It's just tying into, it's either tying into the corner or tying in five and a half inches over to the flat wall. That's the big difference. I mean, what you will have is potentially like a trim board issue if you turn the corner. We're trying to do everything we could to conform, not to increase the number of variances, not to introduce a resubmission for more variances than we already had.
And I understand the intent, and I think the board appreciates any effort to minimize variances that are requested. But we're talking about a matter of inches there, and so I just think it's important that we understand what the consequences are of conformity and with regard to the front porch, it's the same thing. I mean, you know, nobody's interested in having a procedural project that's going to be shorted as a result of not feeling comfortable asking for five and a half inches or, you know, eight inches that you might need for the step. So I just, I'm comfortable that you're comfortable, but the reason for the question is that you shouldn't assume that no variance is better than a variance under some circumstance.
Right, so I mean, is there any significant detriment to, to losing that five inch from a functionality perspective?
From a functional standpoint.
So Chairman, I also want to point out the rear of the house, the walls flush, on its outside.
Yeah.
So bumping it out towards the east, you know, if you notice only a few inches, that would actually put them over the threshold of the floor area ratio too, so that's probably part of the consideration.
It's a give and take, right? Like if we, if we pulled it out five and a half inches, we could come in an inch and three quarters on the back. Either way, I think nobody's going to notice that from a day-to-day living experience standpoint.
Right, look, what, what we don't want is we don't want a trip hazard on the front porch as a result of an accommodation to a number. And we don't want any irregularity with regard to how the house is improved as a result of needing a strict standard. I, I recognize it with a couple inches here and there. It, it's fine, you can, you can propose exactly what you want, I just don't want you to.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. It's a part of the thought process, appreciate it.
So other than the existing non-conformities that are not being exacerbated and the proposed excess habitable floor area, there's no other variant for being questioned?
Just for the record, my letter does call out a variance for the combined side yard setback. Mr. Jackson's confirmed that the plan does show that the addition pushed in a little bit, therefore complying. So it is just a one variance that are requesting the variance for combined side yard, so like in my letter, goes away and that's just an existing condition at this point. And, and Earl, at the end of the day, the, the net increase in the floor area is, is that hundred thirty-four point one square feet? To be honest, I can't tell you the delta off. I'm telling you that's.
I'm looking at A two hundred on the new plans.
Yeah.
The front porch shows. I don't see the, I don't see it configured with a recessed step.
So the front face, look at it. Case is the front base of the porch is this plane. We maintain that plane. Across the front, and the recessed tread, it's just one. It's this guy here.
So it's the second, it's the second stair up. The first one is in front, the second one is recessed, and there just can't be seen.
The first, the first tread is in line with the property line? The second riser, so second riser is.
So it's the following sheet, A two oh one, that's gonna show the, the elevation in regard to how the five-inch step off is gonna look.
This is the outline of the existing house. Rather than a flush base, you'll have just a small return. Covered back porch.
The numbers and where you got to that five-inch additional setback. What is the, the side yard setback from the proposed addition?
So the existing side yard setback is. Ten foot ten, and then you add the five foot two.
It's from sixteen foot. All right, yeah, it's, it's a one foot ten, or so.
Yeah.
I confuse me, it's eleven foot ten.
Yeah, the one foot ten is from the setback line where.
Okay, yeah, I thought you said it was, I thought it was ten feet plus the, okay, sorry. Mr. Strider, I have a comment here as well, just to clarify the dimensions, which was specified the setback to the existing building and the setback to the addition.
Is there a, is there a shed along the side of the house? So there's, there's a shed on the, on the, on the one side and it's not compliant, it's gonna be.
I think it says it shows that on the.
And with regard to drainage, you know, can we go back to the, the site plan? So, so one of the things that clearly was apparent when we looked at this last time was that it really felt fully developed, and it really felt like we'd covered as much as we could cover. I recognize that we were not necessarily increasing beyond the limit, and I think your numbers come out just about there now as well. Is there, as part of this, is there any intent to install any, any sort of improvement to the drainage system by way of drywells, for example?
No, there's no drywells, there's no break-in practice. The one thing that we will do in the patio right now, so one of the things we're going with, with how they calculate their discovery, the patio right now is sand set paper, so it's perfectly, the water is, is moving through to the paper joints. And we're just going to extend that, so I would see that as a benefit. What, what used to be Sukita House is now going to be also sand set papers.
So the, the papers are included in your coverage calculation, but your point is that it's not concrete slat?
Yeah, we're, we're under the fifty percent and it's not a concrete slab, so we feel like there's no issue with drainage. There's no current situation on site with the neighbors where there's a drainage issue, so we haven't perceived any issue with that.
I, I don't, I personally don't see enough correlation between what you're doing and the, and drainage to even propose as a condition of any approval that you do any sort of underground detention. But I'll tell you that with a back home place, it is really easy and, and the applicant would benefit from installing some drywells. There's, there's, there's reason to think about it. But I'm not gonna suggest that we've conditioned it, because I, I can't, I can't tie it in. You're not making the conditions substantially worse than his, I just think it's really tight.
Did you say something early, earlier about previously existing garage or something?
Yes, I was, at the, at the previous meeting, there was a question about why the house was already over the floor area coverage. History as we know it, as the owners know it, is that that back room was a garage at some point in history before they purchased it. So I referred to that fact as the one garage. Is a few steps lower from the main structure, it's on slab. You can see when you're there, there's a, a couple, a couple courses of block turned on the wall. So that's why I referred to that as the.
And how old is the house?
And how old is the house?
Eighty three. Eighty three.
And they purchased it.
Seventeen.
I know that there's a ordinance that if you have existing garage space.
Yeah, it's existing.
But it's already existing. Converted from.
What was the rest of that technical?
So I believe it in that there's an ordinance in the garages that if you have off street parking in a, in a garage, you can't remove required garage space from a.
It, it was, it's finished.
It's been.
It's presently converted and testimonies it was that way.
And he just said previously existed garage. So I was just curious.
The one I noticed two hundredths in the decimal. So I very much appreciate that. And in fact, the proposal far is actually two thousand. So thank you. I kind of want to summarize back what I'm hearing, right? So last time, they're the same habitable floor area, right? It was twenty four, ninety eight, ninety six, five. And what you did with the homeowner was said, hey, if you add this extra cost, which is literally new foundation right there, you would be able to still get the square footage that you want, but everything else could come online from a conformist perspective. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. I don't want to take full credit though. Lauren.
Yeah, that's very noticeable. Thank you.
Well, well, the foundation base, is it going to be a new basement in addition to the basement?
Not a new cellar.
Yeah.
This, is there an existing cellar and is it continuation? It's a fully existing cellar. So it's going to bump out just beneath the addition so that you know, it's good now. I'll look behind the back porch.
Was there anything else in?
As a condition of any, you would agree to revisit your calculations. Obviously, the building coverage isn't over the threshold, but we'll just get that squared away. As you mentioned at the beginning of your testimony. We'll also update the block coverage and ensure that it doesn't exceed fifty percent.
And that'd be validated by you?
Absolutely. Yeah. I measured it. It, it was pretty much fifty on the dot. He's saying it's just under it. But we'll look at that again. And as I mentioned in my letter, I think there's a nice big rectangular patio here. So if they did need to cut it down, they could just take an inch or two off the patio to comply. So we're not seeking a variance tonight.
So if it did exceed fifty, no issues with cutting the patio back one or two. I don't know what measurement you just stated there. It just.
That's correct.
In order to bring another fifty.
That's correct. We will not, not seeking a bear.
And the addition, it's going to tie into the rest of the house. It's going to look like.
And should you need any other approvals, I see you or anything, I think that you would, but if you do, you would submit. I have nothing further, Mr. Jackson.
Board of any questions with regard to the testimony at the first time? Or after the public? Okay. Are there any members of the public that have any statements or any questions with regard to the?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brodsky, anything closing?
No, I just wanted to, I, I pretty much set, set it forth at the opening. I think the board understands and appreciates the level of thoughtfulness that went into the proposed plan and, and taking into account and incorporating as much as possible all of the comments and concerns raised, but raised for the board. So, you know, based on that, we would ask the board to look favorably on the application.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
You know, just to reiterate what Mr. Brodsky said, I definitely appreciate the changes that were made. You, you know, took away from the last meeting and made some changes. And I think not only, you know, it alleviated some of the issues. I think that you were coming out with a better product at the end with how that new space is more connected with the dining room, with the family or the kitchen, so you can watch your kids. So I think it's, you know, acceptable plan and.
I think it flows better than the first plan and it accomplishes what the applicants were looking for. So I think it's a good, good plan.
I like the fact that the addition is adjacent to the driveway, which is adjacent to the neighbor's driveway, which gives considerable open space between the two houses. And I think the applicant has gone above and beyond to make the necessary changes. I like what they've done.
Yeah, just, just echoing out to, you know, hit the same message, but well done. What I like about this, I think this is a model for the considerations taken into a design with seeking a variance. I think every variance requested is equal in its own weight. So each one has just as much weight as the other one. And you were able to put a little money out of your pocket extra, and I recognize that. I know that's hard. But you were able to do that to help ensure that you were within the intent of the ordinance's intent of what exists and I'm a full figure.
Nothing really to add. I agree with my colleagues here on the board. I think this is not a good example of, you know, a lot of work went into the first meeting. I recall a lot of calculations and the discussion and appreciate everybody here and listening to that and bringing back, I think, a plan that sounds like you're excited about. And, you know, I would say this shouldn't be any proven as before.
I, I think it's really interesting how we get here. You know, we, I don't, I did, I did not like, but we never really got to it. The idea of adding a second story above the garage because it really does impede here like the space of the neighbors. Nobody's entitled to three hundred square feet in excess of what the limit is. But when you're working with an existing structure and it was, you know, essentially an add on addition. You know, you do come to the board, I think, with, you know, the opportunity to update the house in a way that I think is, is good for the longer term. And I think on balance, the reason that the excess square footage makes sense is because of what was done, because of the adjustments that make it more up to date for the future for this family and the next one. And, and I think it's good. It was a very strange road. Because we didn't spend much time last time talking about much more than how to measure. But however, however, we got here, I like where we got. Anybody have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the conditions that Jordan outlined to include that if the measurement exceeds that fifty, that the portion of the patio is moved to be within, sorry, the limits or.
Or, or anything else you want to move to be within the limits.
Sure.
So the only suggestion I would make is that it's also to comply with any requirements and recommendations set forth in Mr. Rizzo's November three.
Yeah. And Jordan, you also mentioned the approvals require that if subsequent approval is needed, that they'll be sure to ascertain the vote.
Yep.
Ms. Bigley?
Yes.
Mr. Richby?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. LaMara?
Yes.
Dr. Lawford?
Yes.
Mr. Pintella?
Yes. Yes. We're going to leave that set of plans.
Put our time in last time. Nicely done, Mr. Brodsky. Nicely done.
Let's keep that moving forward. Yeah.
So to introduce yourself on the Smith application. So now it's fine. Let's, let's do it again, right?
No, we're.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is the Smith matter, fifteen Williams Street. This matter was commenced, I have my notes correct, at the September eight, two thousand twenty two meeting. The board was continuing to the next meeting. Do we also want to check if we did earlier, Mr. Chairman, who would be available, Artis Day to get to go? Yeah, I think we should. Are all board members still present tonight? Were we all here on September eight?
I was not.
Ms. Pintella was not? Ms. Quigley was not? Did we review or did we not have enough?
I reviewed.
We have certification standing?
Yes.
So we have our first seven available. Thank you. And we swore, Mr. Rizzo, at the last meeting, we swore him again. You swear it has to be given, what are we to open up the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Will then Mr. Brodsky put his appearance on the record?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Irene, Mr. Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant, Stephen and Harry Smith.
Frankie, you want to mark any dance or you want to mark as we go?
No, it's really just the land that we're, the land that we're granted.
So let's form Mr. Cronin. You do swear it has to be given, what are we to open up the truth?
I do.
Excuse me, your name, please?
Matthew Cronin, C R O N I N. One twenty nine Shrewsbury Avenue, Red Bank.
And were there, was there an additional set of plans subsequent to the ones we marked at the last meeting?
Yes, we've got a five second revision five, nine twenty nine, twenty two.
Nine, twenty nine.
Twenty two.
Twenty two?
Yeah.
What number were we up to? We were up to and including A five last time?
You got it.
So this is A six. It's Mr. Cronin's set of plans, additional operation plan consisting of how many sheets, Mr. Cronin?
Four sheets and a red.
Four sheets plus a rendering. So it's total five?
Yes.
And last revision date, September twenty nine, two thousand twenty two?
Correct.
Exhibit A D F six. Brodsky?
Thank you, Ms. Irene. Know your thing. The applicants, we were here back in September and we heard some some deliberations and comments and concerns raised by the proposed plan as it was, the plan as it was posed at the time. Just to remind the board, this, you know, somewhat unusually situation, irregularly shaped lot where there was originally two separate lots, which had merged as a matter of law, but there's sort of the mother lot, if you will, and then an adjacent vacant parcel and immediately adjacent to the subject property. When we were here last time, and there's an existing single car garage at the rear, located at the rear yard. When we were here last time, we had proposed the construction of the two car garage on that, what I call the adjacent lot. And, and that did necessitate a number of variances and, and concerns raised by the board. Again, for the, the applicants, the homeowners went back to the drawing board with their architect to brainstorm and come up with some sort of reasonable utilization of that lot in order to gain some, some additional living space for, for their growing family and for them working from home. And so what you'll see as we go through is that what's proposed is rather than that, that, that two story and it, and it included a two story addition as well, extending out to the rear. So now the revised plan eliminates the two car garage in the front of the vacant parcel, if you will. And the homeowners figured out a way in consultation with their neighbors to, to maintain the utilization of that existing single car garage in the rear yard. If you recall, there were some questions about access to it. And, you know, it was determined that there could be a relocation of an existing fence, which, which actually approached, you know, to, to, to a certain extent onto the applicant's property. And that can be, that can be relocated and there was concern about visibility and coming out of that driveway. And there's a tree there that, that there's some research done and perhaps that can be trimmed or somewhat change in order to improve the visibility as, as you're coming out of, out of that, leaving the property. And what that did was opened up the opportunity for Mr. Cronin to, to get a little creative in terms of what to do with the proposed addition. And, and I think you'll, when you hear it, you'll agree that it's a good use of the property. Again, we've got a situation where, you know, we've got a fairly modest sized house and we've got two people working from home and kids and what have you. They're in the, you know, they, they've heard, they've owned this property since two thousand and fifteen. They want to stay and they want to be able to have a functional, workable home for, for the family. And so eliminating the two car garage in the front, continuing the utilization or improving the utilization of that existing one car garage, eliminating the second floor addition in the rear and then proposing an addition on, on sort of J, you know, on that adjacent vacant lot, which would consist of like a, a study office type room on the main level and also a mudroom and a bathroom and which, which really works well with the way the house works in terms of kids and, and everyone utilizing that front entrance most of the time. So it, it, it ended up working well to utilize that additional excess land to incorporate an increased functionality for the home. So, you know, with, this is again a situation with pretty, you know, fairly significantly oversized lot and it's over nine thousand square feet. Again, in the R five zone. And so that's, that's, that's kind of again, similar, similar story as to what we were, we were just talking about in the prior application is taking into consideration input from the board and then coming up with, you know, something that's palatable and acceptable for the, for the homeowners and useful for them and enable them to stay in the home and, and stay in the area. And while at the same time honoring and, and sort of respecting the, the zoning criteria that applies in minimizing the proposed relief. The proposed relief does, we, we, we reduced the number or eliminated the necessity of a number of variances. And, and what does remain is maximum floor area variance that Matt talked about. There's a rear setback variance, but it pertains to that sort of short vacant lot, which, which Matt will walk forward through. And then there are some other existing non-conformities that are not being expected. I agree. So what's the board, so the massing was, was, was reduced significantly. That two story addition in the back and being able to continue utilization of that. Unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is have Matt walk forward through in some more detail at revised point.
Sure. I just want to confirm the markings on your memo of October five. Looking at zoning tables specifically. You've got the minimum mark debt that's fifty feet, which is an existing condition that's not changing. You're calling out a variance for the minimum side yard setback for the principal structures.
Yeah, can I, can I stop you real quick? There's actually one more variance which I've worked out. The front yard setback is there.
Okay. Well, let, let's go through what's here. The, so the minimum side yard setback for the principal structure, is the existing condition is six point nine and there's a variance six point nine. So we're continuing the previous. Is that the same situation with regard to combined yard setback? It's exacerbation of previous non-conformity?
Correct.
And what about the, and so I understand the square footage, that's going up, that's a new variance addition. And what about the maximum building height? Is that thirty five feet? That, that's present?
I would like the architect to put that.
I would like the architect to put that on the record here, but in the plans, it looks like the addition is all one story. The thirty-five feet is the existing building that will be raised or lowered.
All right, so that's a pre-existing non-conformity, we believe, as to the existing structure. What's the last item that you were mentioning? Is there's a new one?
Yes, so the last item was, it was captured in Mr. Cronin's memo with all the relief. It is a one yard setback.
Yeah.
And it actually goes to stair. It's an existing, it's actually twenty-two point five feet to the base of first stair. And they're proposing to shift the stairs just a few feet. So it's basically functioning the same way it does today, but because they're touching it, the existing condition comes there.
So the, the measurement should be to the first step if it's in excess of six inches. So if it's below six, if it's six or below, it doesn't count. If it's above six, it does. So that step is above six inches above grade?
It is.
Okay. And so the existing measurement to that step is what, twenty-two and a half?
Twenty-two and a half feet from the front yard and we're shifting it basically two feet to the north, keeping the same stair dimensions.
So the number that's on Mr. Rizzo's zoning table, the twenty-five and a half is to the actual porch itself?
That's to the porch, that's to the front of the house, yes.
Okay. And so none of the stairs are picked up there? So?
It's shown on their plan, both the house and the stairs are dimensioned on the plan.
Okay. So, so effectively the staircase as it sits right now is in the front yard setback. You're proposing a relocated, same dimensions, the same approach that would exist, but in a new location?
Correct, yes.
I got it.
It's being shifted parallel with property line.
Okay.
Mr. Rizzo, real quick, let's break down a lot of the principal structure area and the added lot. Like, we, we broke them down, right? Because that second piece on the left was purchased later. What's the size of that lot?
Fifteen hundred, roughly.
Roughly fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, so prior to, prior to when that was purchased, the, it was actually seventy-five hundred square feet, the lot, check.
Thank you. And, and, and they were purchased together?
Yeah, yeah, no, understood. I'm just trying to, I just.
Yeah. Okay. Matt, if you would, if you could just, you, you, you remain sworn, obviously, if you could just walk forward through revised plan. Highlight the additions that were made.
All right, so the first big change was we removed the two car garage on the north side of the property, which approached on the front yard, created a full parking variance and approached on the, the combined side yards.
And Matt, just for the benefit of board members who may not have been here, just, just real quickly, just note the sort of delineation of the property.
Again, we have an L-shaped property, which is, as Rick mentioned, and I take Mr. before we ever mentioned, it's, it's two tax lots. It's a, it's a fifty by one hundred main lot and then it's a, I'm sorry, fifty by one fifty main lot and then fifteen hundred square foot smaller lot to the west, creating an L. The main house, the original house was built on the, on the, the large piece of the lot. It's really fully compliant aside from six point nine where seven is required for the setback, which could be a mess there. From the survey. The, the smaller lot has been vacant or the smaller part of the lot has been vacant. So our original proposal was a, a two car garage with a double driveway and a double curb cut coming out onto Williams Street to take care of all of our parking and take the, the tandem parking out of the equation. After listening to the board's comments last time, we decided to omit the, the garage concept and really looking at it, the driveway complies. The existing driveway does comply with the ordinance. We can get, the two cars now required, we can get three cars in there. And, and with, with the garage, the Smiths has, was, there was some discussion at the last board meeting and the Smiths are possibly have or are, are approaching, and they can fill us in a little bit more on that, about the moving of the fence, which would gain them another two feet to the property line. It's the neighbor's fence, so it could be a little more than two feet to the property line. There's also a tree in the front corner. You can see the corner over here. That is, is creates kind of a blind spot and creates this kind of dog leg in the driveway. The Smiths have also talked to landscapers and tree surgeons about the possibility of trimming it or even what are the ramifications of removing it, replacing it elsewhere. That's not required to meet the parking requirement. But they are looking at doing those things to clean up the driveway area a little bit for what are, excuse me, to answer our original concerns of the driveway being difficult to back out of.
Mr. Cronin, can you talk about the fence more? That's the neighbor's fence?
It is.
And what does moving it away, you're closer to the property line, do?
Technically, if it's the neighbor's fence, it's got to be six inches on his property line.
Sure, but does it improve the driveway situation or no?
It does. Right now, we have about fourteen feet clear from the fence to the house. And that would get us anywhere from seventeen point five. I'm sorry, that's seventeen point five to the new part. It, it would buy us between fifteen and sixteen feet. Total clearance from the house to the, to the, to the property line. There are no doors on this side of the house, so we don't have to worry about a porch or anything like that, which is kind of common in this neighborhood with the side entry porch.
You're not proposing any new impervious coverage, all right? So you're shifting the fence, it's essentially like grass or landscaping of some sort, but it's not drivable surface?
We're not expanding the driveway, we're just basically expanding the door swing area.
Is it, is the neighbor's fence currently on the, on the Smiths' property?
To my understanding, it is, yes.
Yes, it is.
It's, I, I have it shown here, it's shown on our latest survey, but it's significantly on our property.
Mr. Cronin, are you proposing that through this addition to add bedrooms to the house?
One bedroom, yes.
Okay. So what I remember from the last time was a discussion about a considerably different addition that was receiving some resistance and there was a lot of discussion about whether or not the existing improvements were usable. I, 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 I don't think that the, I understood the original thrust of the application, we need places to park. It was sort of an explanation of why the, the garage was being proposed. I, you need to satisfy the requirements regarding parking and the extent that you're establishing that you're going to be able to do that, I think that that's, that, that's fine. But I don't think that the board was overly concerned about how it was parked. It was sort of, I think, evaluating the, the justification that was being advanced with regard to it being a garage. I'm interested in going back to the structure, we can revisit the driveway if we must, but what was the original footprint of the garage? I remember having a different reaction to the addition at the time than I'm having as I see this footprint. Was it deeper? Was it closer? What was the proposed setback of the garage?
The garage was the front yard setback of the garage was one and a half. Side yard was seven point five and a rear was six point five.
So not dramatically different from what you're proposing now? I, I guess.
What we're proposing now, it complies virtually with everything except the rear yards, as far as the setbacks go.
I gotta be honest with you, the other one looked like it didn't even comply a little and this feels like it fits in, I'm trying to understand where the difference is. I, I, I can't exactly figure it out. Four feet appears to matter a lot.
Yeah.
I think the driveway and, and, and the, and the idea of covering all of that. So I, I'm just curious, I, I like the, the looks of this.
The two car garage was a big structure.
Yeah, and it kicked in some variances about parking the front yard and, 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 and having, you know, from a streetscape, having the garage facing the street at that, that, at that unimpeded location as opposed to, you know, an addition that's part of the existing.
How many linear feet does the new addition as proposed now extend onto that fifteen hundred square foot additional yard? Is it, I think it's a proposed garage?
Oh, no, no, it isn't. It's, our proposed setback is twelve point five, so we're, we're five feet shorter.
And, and in terms of, of extension from the house onto that additional, that additional yard?
Yes.
Okay, how many linear feet is that and how many linear feet is, is remaining on that, on that yard?
And we are proposing
of the width of the addition.
We're, the ton of addition we're proposing is twenty-four point six feet. We are, with that, we are proposing a twelve point five foot setback to the north and then the existing fifteen foot setback, which gets us to twenty-seven point five, where even with the adjusted number, twenty-five, where we have seen the, the adjusted total for the, for the combined yard setbacks, which we had an issue with last time we were here.
How many feet exist between the, the addition, the, the left side of the addition as you face the house to that property line?
Twelve point five. Twelve and a half feet.
And how many feet would it have been with the garage?
Seven and a half.
It's five feet extra. It's five feet closer to their house.
The garage, those five feet closer to the neighbor's house.
Right. Can you, can you go to the next, the next page? I think it'll be a little bit better to.
Yeah, sure.
So this here is five feet closer that way, right? You said garage, you said five feet this way?
Yes.
And the garage used to stick out four feet more that way?
Right, so the garage was that.
Yeah. Four feet closer to the curb, five feet closer to eleven Williams, thirteen Williams?
Eleven.
Eleven, thanks.
And, and six inches closer to the, to the rear.
Mr. Cronin? This addition we're talking about here, it's now proposed to be seven feet from the rear yard.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Whereas it was six and a half feet before.
Yeah.
Was part of your design for that because seven feet is the side yard setback, which is essentially the neighbor's side yard?
Pretty much, yes. We, we took a look at that, the original proposal was six and a half based on six and a half, that, that was approved next door. There was some discussion on it, but we are really our, our relation to the neighboring property on third is, is his side yard, so we figured seven feet was a good starting point. It's a reasonable number. It's from his property, it's the, it's the relation he would see from, to another side yard.
Do they have structure immediately behind those additions?
Their backyard is pretty, pretty wide open.
That's an interesting.
Yes, it's an unusual situation.
No, but I, I think that the, the thinking is sound, that if the seven foot would have been required of him to try to provide some courtesy where obviously the, the rules as they, they are, don't apply or apply here would, would require some rethinking.
Right.
I, I like the logic of that.
Do you want to go into the second page again? What is the ramifications from an architectural perspective? If you continue to shrink the addition, not from the front, right? Front, I understand it's four feet further back from the curb, but if you went to the back of the addition where your red mark is at the top there? If you continued, yeah, from there, if you continue to shrink that closer to the curb, what happens from an architectural perspective?
And the mudroom gets less usable. We've got thirteen six, which is not a huge bedroom. We're also, we've designed this, the Smiths have, both of their parents visit and this would be a guest room that they would use. Everybody's aging, so this is designed to be easier to get around. The bathroom's a little bigger than what we could have made it to make it not accessible, but more aging in place friendly.
Check, check. So in your opinion, that seven foot junior yard setback optimizes the functionality of this, and if you shrunk that addition even further, the functionality really decreases, basically?
Yes.
Check, thank you.
So the, excuse me, the addition, the steps we were talking about before, we shifted the front door over to basically just balance the front elevation and to balance the, the plan a little better. The entry to the house, we reduced what was a large mudroom to a working mudroom, it's built in, laundry on the first floor, the bedroom, the study kind of guest room, suppositories and a bathroom with a shower. Both of the Smiths have worked from home and they, and do work from home from time to time, so they would each get private space to work. The rear addition is still the great room that we proposed. Expanded kitchen or designing a living space and then we reduced the covered porch and moved the, the stairs a little bit to avoid the combined side yard setback issue that we ran into the last time. So the only combined side yard setback issue we have is the, is, is the addition extending the, and extending the existing house. Then as we talked about the logic of taking the second floor, the spaces on the second floor, which were another bathroom and a bedroom and laundry and bringing them downstairs allows us to reduce the volume of the, of the rear addition significantly. The addition was out to here the last time. And that opens up the light area and open space of the neighbors on Third Street once again, question. And also the false neighbors, quite specifically the neighbors to the north, it, it just opens it up, it creates less of a large volume. This is a large house, this is a huge roof. And we, we like the idea of being able to reduce that and create, so we, by creating the two one story additions. We created a complimentary roof slope to the existing. My, my sort of standard would be to try to match the existing roof slope, but it was just too, to make the, the addition too massive. So we, we created a lower slope roof, which we're using in the back on the porch in the addition, as well as the front addition there. And then this is a rendering of the house on the property.
And Matt, I don't, this was not Mark, was it?
This was part of, the, the, eleven by seventeens were part of the, the package.
Yeah.
They were black and white, so we're going to mark the separately as the color enhanced version or whatever?
Just, I believe, the color version.
They were colored?
Was it?
Yeah.
I didn't recall. Okay.
So is that, that's one of the sheets of exhibit A D F six?
Yes.
Thank you.
I showed the, the existing house and then I showed the eighty foot west with the property lines shown relative to the house to show that we are, we have created a more balanced elevation, a more balanced property. It, it seems to work a little bit better. And truly rethinking this allowed us to create some, some better spaces than what we had last time.
People are telling us what we want to hear.
No, that's.
Can we look at the floor plan for the first floor again?
And before we move that, to get, mentioned it at the last meeting, but in fact, we're going to basically use the same siding or something very similar to it?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Cronin, to the rear of the existing structure, can you identify where the addition is?
The addition is here.
So the porch will be new, the covered porch in the rear.
Correct.
And there's an addition to the first floor living space. The last applicant that we heard this evening, they brought their walls in to comply with the side yard setback. Can you walk us through what would happen to your plan if you were to do something similar here? Start with how far, how far from compliant are you?
I mean, combined. We're twenty-one point nine on a combined, we're twenty-five is required, so we'd be three point one feet off. We, we cannot fix the existing non-conformity. And so it seemed like it would, it made sense to continue it. Three and a half feet gets us in.
And and how are you finishing that space and help us understand why that wouldn't work? Or why it would be sub off?
It's a large multi-purpose, but it's a large uh, living dining kitchen kind of great room space, and part of that is the 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 continued volume, we can't add volume to the height all for all of it, because it 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 sort of, it it's partly in the addition and partly under the second floor.
Mr. Cronin, excuse me, on the right side of that picture?
Yes.
That little corner thing, what is that?
It's a banquet, oh, breakfast.
And is that a kitchen countertop along the side of that house?
This is a kitchen here.
So is that going to be new?
The the existing kitchen is here, so we're gonna change the kitchen, make it a little bigger.
Is that countertop in the old section without the addition?
For the most part.
Already there?
No, no, the the existing kitchen is
Okay.
Along this back wall here.
Okay, but if you pulled, my point being that if you pulled the new section in like the prior applicant did, you'd have to put a jog in your kitchen counter.
If we did it on this side, yeah.
You, right, so you you wouldn't be able to do it the most, the most logical way to do it if you needed three feet plus would be to pull it in a foot and a half plus on each side to make it, you know, make sense, right?
Or even maybe three.
Couldn't even really do it on that side because it would mess up the linear consistency of the kitchen counter between the old section and the new section.
Right, right.
Right, it wouldn't make sense the way it would have.
The whole cut on the.
Yes, you'd make the cut on one side, which would sort of make it not symmetric or not saw and driven part of the house. Yeah, I mean, I can see a difference between the accommodation for the sideboard yard setback with the prior application. So it looks to me they're just trying to get their new kitchen to make sense on that sidewall.
Yes. What's the distance from the back of the covered porch to the beginning of the garage, to the side garage? Uh, do you know what that is? Back of the covered porch to the beginning of the side garage?
About 22 feet.
Seating is a lot, 150 feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Garage is set up 13 feet. Yes.
Mr. Cronin. You have a note on your plan, which I think was carried through previous points, that's pre-existing, not forming condition and be extended for the the building height. Uh, just for the record, your supposed addition is fully compliant with regards to the height, correct?
Yes, it is, yes.
You would remove that comment? Yeah, just for clarity.
Yes.
With the additional bedroom, you're still compliant with our size as far as other apartment spaces?
Yes, we're required to have three, and we have the three.
More than three. And the last thing is that the the previous hearing, you agreed to formally consolidate the lots, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Mr. Brodsky agrees to that, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Cronin agrees to it.
Yes.
But he's agreeing to it also.
The most important people are agreeing to it. Yeah, I mean, we'd have to do it, I mean, we've we've got a single asset with otherwise straddle to probably. So that's, it's become one true lock number.
Not a lot 24 and 25.
Right, we'd probably get, we 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 consult with the assessor, get a new lock number of, you know, whatever it's gonna be, 24.01 or 25.01.
Your your letter in November 16, you're calling, I just have one question on that to make sure I have the numbers right.
Yes.
On the second page, second page, we have any combined side yard setbacks, you have current proposal like 2.9, should that be 21.9?
It should be, yes, it should, it should.
Okay, good, thank you.
And the combining of the lots is part that's contingent on the approval, correct?
Yeah.
Or part of the approval process.
It would be a condition of the approval.
They're not gonna do anything for you if you deny it.
Well, yeah, but that was mentioned in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Say again, Tom?
They won't do anything for you if you deny it, it would be a condition of approval.
Check, check.
Otherwise, they're back, back to where they were. But I I think this this was discussed earlier, and as Mr. Brodsky indicated, I don't think there's much doubt that those two lots are merged matter, regardless of where.
Sure, yeah, yeah, even the prior owner had acquired simultaneously the same ownership.
So, Mr. Cronin, with regard to the addition to the north, um, I I think you've explained the layout to where I can follow how the space got to be where it was and the utility that you get out of it. Um, and I thought that Mr. Rivera actually did a good job of explaining why it couldn't get smaller. Um, however, um, I was interested in why we couldn't comply with regard to the the side yards, and I I think I already seen the the keeping of the lines made sense, I follow the logic out. But I am looking at a 9,000 square foot lot and a point three uh, floor area ratio. If this were in R10, your floor area ratio would be point two eight. And if that were the case, you would you would exceed what the standard would be for that larger zone, and so that's that's indicating to me that this house still feels a little bigger than it should be, and I'm wondering whether it is or it isn't.
If we were in the 7.5, we would comply.
7.5 would be a minimum lot size 7500, what would be the floor area ratio?
The F A R.
0.5.
0.35.
Would comply.
We actually comply with 7.5 on everything except the front yard. And the rear yard.
All right, well, I appreciate that for context, but let's go through my analysis anyway. So with regard to an R10, it would be point two eight, and so there would be a hundred square feet here there that's that's in excess. And there there's a lot of examples of those houses in town, because uh, in our 10, 100 by 100 is the standard size. The houses are limited to 2,800 square feet, so it it really is, you know, instructive with regard to, you know, how big houses should be. Is there any addition that's going on the second floor?
No, we're not touching the second floor.
So you're leaving the the second floor exactly as it is, and and with regard to the first floor, you're creating, are you opening that space? What is the existing configuration of the uh?
Let me say, the existing house is a four box, um, modular hall.
Oh, right.
And we're taking the rear wall off of the two first four boxes and putting in a large beam. And we're gonna add, uh, our intent is to add 27 10 by 12 across the back.
So so let's walk through, I I I'm just trying to get to the to the utility argument. You walk through the front porch, to the right, you've got this uh, area that the gazebo looking room, right, so that's not changing, and functionally, what is that space now?
It was originally a dining room, it has become uh, Mrs. Smith's home hall.
And it won't be a dining room in the future?
No, no, the dining would be done in the brick room.
But it's, those square feet are not useful with regard to what we're doing in the back. Is the, is there like a butler's pantry and whatnot being created there as you walk through the stair?
We're not touching any of this, this is all pre-existing, there's a, there's a half that living closet, but with pantry there that we're actually coming up to, but that's existing. There's a stairs to the basement and stairs up.
So if we went left around the stairs, uh, what 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 room are we entering then?
That would be, what would be technically the dining room, I would figure the table would go there and you'd have your seating by the fireplace.
That's also the main hallway through the front door to get them back to the house as well.
You could make the argument that the dining room is is not used a whole lot, and it's not a bad corridor.
Right, and then, so taking it from the end of what you're saying would be the dining room and the end of what is the butler's pantry, what's that rectangle now as it says, pre-addition? We're talking.
Thanks.
No extra torch for that.
Thank you, it's a 13 feet.
So from the rear wall of the butler's pantry, right, to the rear wall down?
Existing rear walls 13.
13, 13 feet, and currently that space is utilized as the kitchen?
Yes, the kitchen counter is here, and there's a, there's a island there.
And how about the other side of the the room, what what's that used for?
Uh, living space, it's just sort of undefined living space.
And what's the width of that space?
The width of the whole, the room from wall to wall?
Yeah.
Um, 26 10, it's six inch walls.
All right, so right now you've got a 27 by 13 foot room, and you're proposing to make it what size when it's complete?
Well, to make it, uh, 13 plus 11, 24 by 26.
And by making it that size, that room is going to be able to function as a kitchen, an eating area, and a living space?
Correct.
Where currently it couldn't possibly be that.
No, it really doesn't.
And if you were to reduce that size by call it four feet to get down 125 and get closer to that point two eight, you'd really, you'd really ruin the ability to make that into the the great room, multiple function room that you're looking to get. If I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Correct, yes. It also creates the the connection with the backyard that the Smiths, if you look at the photos of the rear of the house, the house sits kind of high, and there's just a couple of windows and a door. Smiths use their patio a lot, so that connection is is an important element of the of the project to that.
Can you put up the side elevation again?
This is the north side. Yes, the south side.
Well, what's the length of the house, front to rear, including the rear covered porch?
What are you covering, which?
About 68, yeah, about 68.
What square footage you cover for?
380. 34.
I'm struggling a little bit with the overall size of the structure. The, when houses are constructed this way, I recognize that covered porch is not far your average square footage. But for all intents and purposes, it feels like house when it's done. And so you're gonna have something that's gonna feel closer to 3,000 or 31, it's gonna feel very long. The benefit is that it's a single story in the back, so that's really gonna help. It's it's really sharp in the front, i- it is no question in my mind that what you've done in the front makes sense, it was like it always should have been done that way. I'm struggling a little bit with what you've got in the rear. I I accept the argument with regard to the interior specs, I think the house needs to be functional. That covered porch feels big, and I'm just wondering if it needs to feel that big.
I would say comparison, I did the covered porch to the house to the south, 21 uh, William Street, and that is 16 by 21, this is 16 by 24, that's also enclosed, this is not gonna be enclosed. That was done compliant, didn't have to come here.
And you're gonna tell me it's great?
They're happy.
So, you know, we have this, uh, we have this discussion with regard to three season rooms. And so the truth is that, you know, add some windows and that's finished space, they're not proposing to finish it, I'm not suggesting that they are. But, you know, it's it's something more. Okay, I I mean, I get it, if you were to take the cover, the roof off of it, do a pergola, do something different, um, what do you lose by way of function, what 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 are you gaining by having it fully covered the whole thing?
Being able to, uh, uh, some more traditional lighting, some fans. Just some cover from the sun, which the pergola would help. It could be, it's just not what it's more of a full cover from the sun and the ability to you do more uniform lighting than the um, than the string lights or some kind of whole light. Um, it it is, it is outdoor living space, no doubt, but it's outdoor, it's outdoor space, the 24 by 16 works with these rooms, because most people want to have uh, their their picnic table and and a seating area. Those two kind of rack up nicely to 12 by 16 and 12 by 16.
I don't have any question that it's gonna be really nice, usable, feel like living space, it's going to be great, I totally follow that. But when you do this, particularly in the neighborhoods with narrow lots, you create this long tunnel effect. Um, do we have photos of the adjacent properties, were they presented last time?
I have aerial.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
Anybody else? Was that, was that Mark last time, Mr.?
He handed it out, I believe.
Every, every day four, I think, like. A four shifting the garage five feet further back from the curb as the loss picking out.
In the rear.
Well, no, in in the front, right?
Or in the rear.
Yeah, so this is a four, Mr. Brodsky, who passed out last time?
Yeah.
Thank you. referring to the aerial, I guess, for. So, um, just to finish my train of thought for the rest of the board members, to the extent anybody was seeing and feeling what I was feeling, on the north side, you've got people's rear yard, so there it it doesn't create that tunnel effect on that side. On the other side, roughly, the other house that's there to the south doesn't go further back. I'm really, really kind of torn on.
There does seem to be a lot of open space available behind the other houses.
To the, to the north?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, because they, because they they rear to the side.
Yeah.
So I I I'll I'll save it for the for the discussion, I I I think, I guess what I wanted to understand is what you lose if the if the roof wasn't there, if you went with a pergola or something different, I think I got a sense of that. Certainly understand why it's the footprint that it is. Where are we on our coverage?
So we're, we're under, we are at.
46 and a third. That's what I calculated, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, um, it's grown up something a little bit smaller.
42.5, yeah, 46. What tree was it?
Uh, Mr. Rivers, I do have a question on some of the calculations on your sheet.
Hold, hold on one second, before we do that, I'm gonna just complete the analysis by asking what the lot coverage would be, the maximum lot coverage if we were in R75 or in R10, and then I would ask the same question with regard to building coverage.
45% for R745.
Lot coverage?
Uh, build, maximum lot coverage is 45%.
Building is 35.
For some lot coverage.
But let's do them both together, so so the proposal is 46.3, are we in agreement on that number?
I mean, that's my number.
That's your number, I'm going George's number, yeah. So if we went R75, if we were looking at it from that perspective, that that limitation would be 45%.
Correct.
And what would the uh, maximum building coverage be?
Uh, 35%.
And this would be 27.7, and what if it were in R10? Lot coverage?
R10 maximum lot coverage, 45% of the same.
Still 45?
Yeah, maximum building coverage is still 35 for R10.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It was actually one of the points I wanted to raise. Um, Mr. Rivers, a quick question, minimum combined side yard setback principle. R5 is what? Says 25 here, but I'm just trying to. Is it 25 now?
It's it's 25 adjusted for the extra width.
Oh, is that what your question is? Um, there's a footnote for it, and you you basically add additional combined side yard setback in your footage based on an increased signage.
Foot and a half for five?
Yeah, exactly, so it's everything over 50 feet.
Yeah, and one and a half feet, so it's almost like your carpet for each hole, five feet that the lot width exceeds the minimum lot width for the zone?
Yes, um, there's a.
So that's why you go from 16 to 25?
Yeah, there's a calculation on the next page.
Yeah, because we're at 80 feet. And if you were at R7-5, does that still apply there as well?
It applies to everywhere.
Nine, 10 footnote, check, check, okay.
Cause the width on the 7.5 to 6.
I'm good. I'm good. And then, actually, I like, uh, minimum front, front yard setback currently requires twenty-five, existing twenty-five and a half feet. That's not an existing non-conformity?
That's twenty-five point five to the house, which does comply. Uh, it's the stairs, the twenty-two point five to the stairs. That is, that is the variance ask.
But that's the actual existing.
I'm going, required here says twenty-five feet, existing says twenty-five and a half.
Right, so that's, so we're.
Twenty-four halves, check, check, sorry.
Twenty-two and a half.
Thank you.
Correct.
Anything else, Mr. Chrome?
Um, no, I, so, any questions?
I have one last question. What other, uh, designs for that back porch could exist? Um, what do you see on average in Fairhaven?
Most people enclose them, uh, at least in the last two years.
Enclose them?
Yes.
Correct, okay, that's all.
Okay, uh, nothing further, Mr. Chrome?
Uh, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Anybody have any further questions, Mr. Chrome, before we, you know, move on to the next witness or the public? Any further?
I've no other questions.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions? So I can pick any statements to the president's application? Correct, but, uh, any further discussion with the applicants or their professionals before we allow Mr. Brown to put?
Do appreciate the work you guys did from last time. It's noticeable.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, uh, Mr. Chair, nothing further. I think we've covered it all on this application. Uh, I, we, we do, we do appreciate the board's concerns with regard to that maximum. Um, you know, we, we have a, we have a fairly large lot here, so, I mean, you know, architect and, and the applicants are comfortable that the, that the property can handle, uh, the, the home a- and the after porch, uh, as is proposed. Um, uh, the revisions have eliminated a lot, uh, a number of the variances. I think it looks great. And so for all those reasons, we would ask for this board to, to your favor.
Thank you. Discussion? No, sorry. Uh, I like the fact that the first floor signed addition placed the garage. I'm glad that you got rid of the garage because that was a major sticking point. Uh, I think the house does look better. Uh, without any question, it's a, it's a beautiful looking house, the way we have proposed right now. Uh, I'm okay with the porch because there's fifty-five feet from the back of the porch to the rear, rear property lot. It's good. Tell us, cause you're trying to convince me. Uh, and that's, that's why I'm okay with that. It's in the back of the house, uh, it's well shielded from the adjacent property and, uh, I don't, I don't have a problem. And, and I like, I appreciate what you guys have done with, with, uh, revising your plan.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, my comments will almost be identical to my previous comments of the last application. You know, you obviously, you listened to what you heard at the last meeting. You made some changes, uh, that I think are very beneficial um, in regards to the porch. That, uh, where the chairman is going to put a pergola there, but looking at that rendering, I think the, the pitched roof, you know, ties that whole backside together. I think a pergola might look a little, not as tidy as that, I guess, that I would say. So, you know, I like the changes, um, you know, that, you know, it's a, a great renovation, uh, great updating for that house, and I think it should be, uh, something that moves forward.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with everybody so far. The one thing about, I guess, this sixty-eight feet length and this covered porch, I mean, the fact that there's two driveways, I think, I'm not concerned with lighting different space. I think there's, there's plenty of space between the adjacent property because there's a driveway that runs across, uh, parallel to that. Yeah, I, I would agree with, uh, Dr. Law for, uh, whenever, if I recall, you know, the, the double cut driveway on the front with its garage was um, very difficult for me. Uh, I think, you know, you came around and made it a usable, um, more of a family friendly space. Uh, and I think it's functions well. The discussions about making that rear room setback three feet, I, I don't, I think that, that's a, that would be a detriment. I think the hardship that that wall's already a parallel line and cutting that wall in, uh, to get a couple hundred square feet really makes that back room, that, the great room idea less functional. I would, I would agree with the proposal, uh, here today to go forward with.
What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to think in my head what it would look like without that porch, and I've seen houses in Fairhaven that have a little bump out, maybe either a pergola or patio, and it looks like a bump out. And my question always is, is it seems unfinished, right? On the west side, I don't know if that's the west side, northeast. There's no houses on the left side of it. It's all backyard and it's further enough that it's past seventeen William Street. And again, the lot's fifty-five feet back. I don't know if there's a better alternative. So, other than that, everything else I'm good with, I mean.
Also, I think putting the bulk of that covered porch to the back as opposed to having the bulk of the garage stepping out on the
Yeah.
second lot. And also because of COVID, my favorite course to beat, you know, the inside-outside aspect of living has really taken on more importance because sometimes things change and people need to do a lot more living outside than they had been used to doing. So I can understand why everybody wants to stick a roof on their back porch.
Well, in your first comment, right with the front, I think it's great. Like that side lot, thirteen, uh, I'll keep going back and forth, I apologize. Thirteen William Street, right? That's such a top, tough lot. How do you make that look? And really what you did, when you look at the front, you would never know that the backyard off of that piece is seven feet. So like, as far as like the completeness of William Street, you know, yeah, does it stink that the other house in a bi-lot, yeah, we, you know, whatever passes past, right? But it really makes it more cohesive. And I, I like.
So there's, there's no question that the, the new plan is, but the new plan is what should have been presented the first time. And it's just, it's the right plan for the lot. And it's great that we got there. You do have a couple of variances though. What I would have argued with regard to the combined side yard setback is that you don't have the extra width there. So you shouldn't be hampered by that additional obligation because you have the frontage, because you're only fifty feet at that point. I do think that it makes for a usable space at the end of the day, and so I think that the great room that you wind up with makes sense. I also think that the addition to the left of the house makes sense. Um, the ordinance, I think, to give a bigger setback is a result of having a wider lot. I think that in balance, I think that this is a reasonable compromise overall. Uh, I have to say that my view of this report is prejudiced by the fact that there's a lot of them and they're too big and it, it's, it's a lot. And so I think about it as house. Um, I respect everybody's opinion. Um, I think that in compromise with regard to the size of the house, not the least of which is the fact that it's thirty-five feet tall, which we no longer permit, but it's a very large structure. Um, I don't think it would be the worst thing I've seen by way of a covered porch, but I also don't think that you give up a lot. You don't lose the ability to live outside if you don't have a covered porch. That feels like house to me and over time you'll look at it and it'll feel like house to, to you too. And maybe somebody will eventually even propose to finish it as a space. Um, I just don't think you give up a lot if you made it a pergola. And, and on balance with regard to the overall size of the house, I feel like that makes more sense. Uh, it's not that I don't like the house. I think the house is great. I think it's really come where it needs to be, but based on the lot, I feel like that porch is really a lot. Um, and that's the place I would, I would wanna see it give a little bit.
I think for the, the back porch is, though, it sits in a spot where I don't think it's gonna impact the neighborhood whatsoever. Um, I have a, a deck in the back of my house, like similar size, but there's no covering over it. And I could tell you, an Irish guy sitting in the sun, in the summer, it's no fun. I'm all for shade. I'm all for cover. The pergola's great, but it doesn't do you any good. You get a rainstorm, you're trying to entertain. I wish I could put cover like that over my, over my deck.
I, I do think the lot's well situated. I, I don't think that you are likely to see it in the same way that you see it under the lots. I don't think there's much of a question about that.
I think the application really came a long way from, uh, last one and again, to then Mr. Chrome and the applicants doing a great job. This is the way the process is supposed to work and, uh, we should have ones others.
Yeah, you know, the, the streets just changed so much over the years. Anybody who was here twenty or thirty years ago knows. And I think this house is, is really gonna help that progression, um, you know, to, to what we have there today.
Hey, Mr. Ari, I have a question for you.
Okay.
On a potential condition I would wanna add. So they talked about going through the legal process to combine the lots, right? So there's no more lot twenty-four, lot twenty-five, right, to make it one? Can a condition be that they confirm the tax records are updated? So if any of their neighbors went to do variance that the right lot, the right address would all be there with the right people?
So what would happen is they would do a deed to consolidation. And as part of that, they would have to confer with the tax assessor to get the new lot number that would be assigned. So they would do a deed where they take the legal description. And you may only have one. I don't know if you have a two-track description or one-track description of your current deed. Assume for the moment you have a two-track description that matches the, the two tax lots. They would combine that into a single track description that walks around the entire L and it would be given new tax number, whatever, and then the tax assessor would update.
Check, check. I would like to make sure, Ms. Brodsky, if I may, that you would check that and make sure that the system is updated accordingly. We've had issues in the past where notification goes out at somebody from two years ago, you know, it's not the new resident. So if you're gonna do it right and combine the lots and all that, I just want to confirm that it's actually updated in the system.
Sure, but when the deed gets recorded, it, it's gonna come.
It should, right, just.
When the deed gets recorded to county clerk's office, a copy of that recorded deed is gonna come to us for our files, gonna go to the borough engineer for their files, and it's going back to the tax assessor. And at that point, it's up to the tax assessor to do what he has to do. I don't know if Mr. Brodsky would have any control over that.
Okay, but I certainly, but certainly it will be required if needed to confirm with the tax assessor what the new lot designation should be.
Yeah, it'll likely be thirteen point oh one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid frustrations from other residents. You know, so I'm just trying to think of how far we can push that. Thank you.
I'm really thinking like a child.
No, completeness and accuracy of data is like a piece of mind.
Any more discussion or motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, put the application as, uh, standing tonight, conditions that we discussed.
A deed to consolidation and comply with any requirements or recommendations set forth in Mr. Rizzo's review letter.
Yes, sir.
Do, do, does anybody, um, care to, um, require that the parking situation be verified so that they can get the appropriate amount of spaces, um, behind the front yard setback? Are we okay with leaving that the way it is? How, how, do you have enough?
Got it.
Do you have enough depth to get three cars?
We've got plenty of spaces behind the front yard setback. The driveway goes over back to the garage.
So you can demonstrate that you can park the required amount of cars?
They show the.
I showed three on the, on the plot plan, one in the driveway, two in front.
Cars are ill-shared, not one in the road.
Maybe I'm remembering too much of the discussion from last time. The driveway is.
I think we got onto the narrowness.
Just a quick learning only question for me. Is there anything specific to the tree that we can put into the approval to protect that mature tree?
Well, then we have to apply with the tree ordinance.
Yeah, okay. I just kindly ask, I'd be part of the field, but just please be mindful of that mature tree and how long it's been there or whatever you can do to save that for the future, of course.
We have a motion and we have a second, second.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Love Overra.
Yes.
Dr. Lawford.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes. I'll abstain. Congratulations, nice shot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Need a five minutes for you?
Yes. I hate calling timeouts, like where it has the momentum.
Jasmine, Miss Playboy.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes. 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 Yes.
So she ready?
Eric.
Mr. Leader.
President. Mr. Chairman, this is the Fentoney matter, number three on the agenda, forty-three Woodland Drive. It was listed on an earlier agenda, the board, I believe, was in November three agenda. We did not commence the hearing. There was an issue with regard to the notice. Uh, the deficiency at that time was the properties located within two hundred feet of the borough of Romson. The applicant did pick up the Fairhaven list, did pick up the Romson list, did get, did get the Monmouth County clerks, but did not get the clerk of the borough of Romson as required by the statute. So we carried the, the matter to tonight's meeting with the requirement that they perfect the notice by picking up the borough clerk, Mr. Brodsky, who was not representing the applicant earlier and is now representing him, out of an abundance of caution, renoticed, uh, entirely. And I reviewed the notice materials. They appear to be in order. Does anyone have any issues, questions, or problems with regard to the notice materials on the Fentoney application? Not for merit of the case, any issue on the notice? Let the record reflect no response. The board has jurisdiction here and consider the matter good for Mr. Rizzo. Our professional engineers, that's gonna be in order to recruit the old group number two.
I do.
He's been sworn, Mr. Brodsky, we'll let you put your appearance on the record, but I think, Mr. Chairman, are there completeness issues, Mr. Rizzo?
Um, so there is a few items.
So we'll let Mr. Brodsky put his appearance on the record and then we'll be complete this, Mr. Chairman, if we may. Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, Rick Rosso, on behalf of, uh, the applicants, Dante, Leanne, Fentoney.
And yes, I do believe there's a couple of completist issues.
Yeah, there's a few items that, uh, that'll be seen here for, uh, I'd be minor.
And those are in your report of August thirty-one?
Correct.
Do any board members have any questions about those? Do you wanna go over them? Or will you, uh, grant the completeness waiver so we can move on to remarks? Could you just listen real quick and make sure everybody knows what we have?
Sure, sure. The applicant requested the ownership disclosure statement, uh, Monmouth County pre-owned SCD and Monmouth County Health Department applications, copies of all these covenants and key restrictions. And then additionally, I identified that the survey provided didn't have a raised seal on it. So it was requested as part of further submission. Uh, the four plans that were provided identified just the subject garage and first floor of the dwelling, not the second floor of the house, which they're not. And the elevations on their structural plans are just the side and rear as well as the garage they can provide. The other two.
So the ownership isn't really required because the applicant's owner is that right? So we're on you separate. There's not an entity. The Monmouth County Planning Board application, there is none because it's not on a counter of, you know, looking for site plan or subletting approved. Pre-owned soil will be a post-condition, post-approval condition if it's required. Monmouth County Health Department, I don't know. I'm not sure why that would be.
Yeah.
Copies, vehemence, covenants, and deed restrictions. Did you have a chance to look at title? Do you notice anything, Mr. Brodsky?
I didn't, but, um, I didn't provide.
So you're asking for a waiver on that for completeness? Survey doesn't have a raised seal. It's up to the board. And the two other issues about the extended plans, that's gonna be up to the board as to how you're gonna deal with it. If you want those in advance, then you're gonna deny the waiver and they're gonna have to come back and provide. Those are on page three of Mr. Rizzo's review letter. If you want to look at those two items again, if you'd like.
Me, my two questions that I have to Mr. Rizzo would be, what is acceptable to waive number sixteen? I'll just refer to the number instead of all the words. And then why wouldn't the survey have, have a seal on it?
Or would have seals probably, or? Would it be the same document or just have to physically seal it?
Check, check. And then number sixteen, copy of all these covenants and restrictions. When is it standard to?
It's a lot of times if it's not applicable, it would be a rule against cases, yeah, it's specifically restrictive.
And how do we attest that it's not applicable? If there isn't anything to provide.
And no, there are no restrictions or reasons that affect the property.
Yeah, I think the focus is on items G and H. Our, for Mr. Rizzo's letter pastry, which is the plans that have been provided are satisfied with those that you can see tonight. If we want something more.
Mr. Shisai has with the, you have the first floor.
Uh, second floor.
Second floor in addition to the first floor that we got, so we can show it, we can introduce it as.
Well, I don't know what the existing square footage is for an addition. If you don't, if you haven't provided the second floor plans to our engineers to review.
Well, I I guess I'm jumping ahead a little bit here, there there was, there was a phase one to the project.
Give us, give us your full name.
Yeah, let's start with that, Al Shisai's Licensed Architect and Landscape Architect.
By your left.
S H I S S I A S. Twenty-seven First Street, Romson, New Jersey.
You just want to test, we give what are the two, both with number two?
Yes.
Thank you.
So there, there's a phase one part of the project, which I'll get into under testimony, uh, that is about to be complete. We knew there was gonna be a variance with uh, what we hope to do is phase two, which we're here for tonight. So we know the square footages that were previously submitted and approved to Fairhaven as part of the phase one uh, portion of the project.
So you certain, you 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 analyze the square footage of the entire home, we feel you don't, you didn't physically submit the floor plan.
As part of this, yeah, what was previously submitted for a building permit, let's say about a year ago, that was approved under zoning, that's where the numbers were that came as part of this application.
It's completely irregular to submit a a limited set of plans, particularly under the circumstances where you have them. When did we ask for the plan? When were they requested?
They were in this report.
Was it, was it yesterday, I mean, when when did they find out that we would like to see all of the plans in the house?
It was requested.
Well, it's in the letter, well, it's thirty-one, it's it's officious. So if the board waives it, they proceed, if the board doesn't waive it, they don't, we don't proceed unless the plans are provided, you called it out in your letter, well, it's thirty-one. How do we get through compliance? I I mean, the representation is that the house is X big, we wanna make it Y big.
Right.
How do we get through compliance without having plans?
They they calculated it, they put the number on the plan, they brought the first floor, which was their.
I don't, I don't think they're complete, I I mean, I don't know. You got, let's, let's, let's look at it now. But but before we get started, I I'm not, I'm not inclined to grant this waiver, I don't understand why, why we don't have a plan.
You had, you had the plan, you. I had the plans with me tonight, yeah, I didn't think that it it wasn't intentional not to provide them. This, the portion that we're here to talk about tonight was up on first floor only. So as, you know, when me and Brodsky were, John were discussing, I decided to bring the second floor plan in addition. Assuming that, you know, you guys might wanna look at what was already done as part of the phase one of this project.
And that's, I've, I've done this a couple of times, it's not normal. And it's, it's off-putted and and disconcerted, so so why don't we just look at the plan, you've got plans with you?
Yeah, sure, can we flip to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the additional fact that. Didn't have a ceiling.
So I I've.
Survey, who owns it? There's animals, we don't know if there are any.
What do you think we don't know?
No, no, no.
Say the waivers are for everything identifying property and what's there and what the size is.
The owner, just, just on the ownership, just on, just to be clear, I mean, ownership disclosure statement. The um, application, I'm assuming, let's pull it out, says that the App can is the owner of the property.
Yeah, that is property, correct.
The owners, the the technical ownership disclosure statement only applies in certain applications, generally larger, either commercial. Subdivision of lots more than twenty-five.
Right. More than twenty-five.
More than twenty-five, dwelling units more than six, I forget the statute. Then you have to give a corporate ownership disclosure.
So that's just if it's not single family residence.
It's not applicable, right, I'm not sure why it's even in there, it's just an N A, I think. So, yeah, so with regard to the survey, this is a twenty twenty-one survey by Charles Summow, he does a lot of this. Charles runs this um, this Sharpie across his seal, and it's, it looks normal. The the document has no signs of being altered. When, when I think this becomes a problem, when you don't have a sealed survey, is when it's really, really old, and they don't wanna go get a new survey. But the idea here would be, as long as we have a reputation that hasn't been altered, and this is real, you know, you, I just wouldn't ask him to go spend money, ask him Charles to send him a new sealed copy. But I want you to know that I've actually looked at that, and 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 that's the way I view this, but you know, we could talk about it.
The application was submitted with one sealed copy.
Then we have.
So we do have a sealed copy.
We have one.
So that's not a waiver, that's a.
So that's, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, as long as you have.
So that goes away, if this survey issue goes away, the ownership is, it's clear, there's no disclosure statement necessary, but the plan is, and it's the issue. It is, because if if discerning between phase one, phase two, understood, right, but when you put, that would have meant if phase one and phase two were combined, all the plans would be looked at. So do phase one, get it done, but then compliance, now be back to phase two. And, I mean, Mr. Leader, if I'm wrong, but when we look at the variance, right, like, every aspect is quite frankly under the microscope, right? Not to the group, but the way to look at a C, D hardship flexibility, right? You have to look at the 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 whole totality of the house and itself and its property, so.
So there's no problem, not, and not necessarily the irregular about submitting to pull permits for things that can be done with that fair.
Understood.
But when the consideration is being given as to the addition, I think what you were saying, I think I agree with it, is that you would normally show the house in its total, at least, I can understand. And the arguments usually, if you don't get it, is that we don't have it. And then the question is, well, how did you measure it? But here, what's, 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 I didn't worry about talking about it, is we didn't have it, and in the letter in August, it was identified that we won. All right.
Just to be clear, the way I interpreted it, and and I could be wrong, was that there was a waiver that we didn't need to submit it. It wasn't that, oh, Fairhaven wants it, and we just don't wanna provide it, so I just, whatever that's worth.
Well, can we, can we go ahead and talk about it since we have it here? And uh, and 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 just, just to clarify, you obviously, in in terms of your calculations, obviously included both floors.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Area and all of that, okay.
And it's on, anything that was done as part of phase one was already on file with the town.
Okay. All right, apologize for that. So, so what I'd like to do this year, if we, if we could go through, and we'll, and we'll rep, we'll mark for identification purposes, the uh, yeah, all of the plans, those floors, and then uh. See how far we can get. And that's the understanding that the second floor plan will be submitted and verified.
Well, I I I would like to get a handle on the second floor, I I would like to understand that we've got good measurements for square footage. And and just meet a threshold before we start then talking about conditions.
Do you wanna do the second floor first?
I I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a handle on it, and I'm having trouble seeing it.
Um, want me to move this closer?
I I guess, the the lines are very faint. Well, why don't you explain to us what this first phase levels? Just explain to us the overall project, because I assume that some of this is additions to the second floor?
Yes. I don't know where the best spot for this is, but. Should we mark, should we mark this, like, right then, presentation?
Yes, what are we gonna mark it? Call out the caption on that, Mr. Shisai, is that what was submitted to us previously?
So there were three, three sheets submitted as part of the architectural package, that was A one, A two, and A three.
Right, that's the July eighteen, two thousand point two plan?
Yes.
Is this, is this part of that, or is this something in addition?
This is an exhibit brought tonight, because we, you know, we did realize that the second floor in phase one would probably wanna be talked about. This was from the original construction document set for phase one.
How's it caption?
Uh, floor plans, A one oh four.
Floor plan sheet.
A one oh four.
A one oh four.
Date of January one, twenty twenty-two.
January one, two thousand twenty-two, one sheet.
Yep.
I D only at this point, this, so this is the sec, what we're referring to as the second floor.
Second floor and first floor.
Second floor.
Yeah.
And first floor, okay, A one for I D only.
Okay.
Why don't you just walk while you are, yeah, please mark it for us. Anyone have a copy of the knockdown letter handy? You got it?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, you were watching.
Okay, and quite frankly, to your point, part of my, the first part of my presentation, we discussed was gonna be what, what is phase one, and and where are we at now? So, again, this was started earlier this year, um, the primary purpose of the phase one project was, on the second floor, we had four existing bedrooms, two baths. One of the bedrooms in this upper right corner, this is the original part of the house, it was a previous addition at some point prior to the current owner. This bedroom here was pretty small, and they wanted to make it more in line with the other two bedrooms for a growing family. So part of the addition was to expand the bedroom, as well as add an en suite bath, and then add a, the walking closet was fairly small for today's standards, so they wanted to add an additional closet. His and her closet, so that was really the primary addition on the second floor. There's also a so a minor expansion of the existing kit back.
Is that, I I I've got confused, you said that there was the original house, and then there was an old addition.
Yeah.
So did, was anything added as part of the recent construction, or were you simply remodeling the interior?
Okay, so, original, original house was pretty much here, back, original love, center hall colonial. This portion of the master suite existed, was, had to be an addition at some point prior. This is what we did, the current homeowner did earlier this year that I'm calling phase one.
So that's new square footage on the second floor?
Yes, it's about two hundred fifteen square feet. But again.
Came out, excuse me, came out still with the four bedrooms.
Still four bed.
But one was larger.
One was larger.
With a closet and an en suite.
Yeah, so it went from a four, four bed, two baths, to a four bed, three baths.
And that was the entirety of the two hundred and fifteen square feet over there?
Yeah.
So the second floor footprint existed?
Sure.
You just remodeled.
No, second floor footprint, we, we added this portion. Basically, kinda squared off the back of the house, so to speak.
So that, that exists today?
Today, yes, it's probably a month or two from completion.
It didn't trigger the barriers.
Now, that, that's why you, this was the important part to get done, you know, soon. Yeah. So, okay, so that, that's part of the phase one project, phase two, sorry, phase one, first floor, which is shown on your plans as existing. Um, was to convert a, I guess it would be a family room to a mudroom, laundry, pantry. And then below the area, that was the second floor addition, there was really no need for additional habitable area in this zone. So the idea was similarly to the previous application, uh, construct a covered porch. So this is under the massing of the second floor addition above. Uh, anything else that was done as part of phase one was basically move some walls around to extend an existing living room that was pretty narrow. Um, and open up to the kitchen to make this as much of an open floor plan as possible.
So every change that you made to the first floor is interior to a pre-existing structure?
Yes.
And there was no additional square footage added to the first story um, below where you added to the second floor?
Correct, it's cover, cover porch, so no habitable space.
So let me understand, how does the square footage? How does the habitable floor area change? I mean, what, where is the change in the habitable floor area?
When?
From phase one?
Wait, wait.
So before, before the.
With this application.
Okay, so two hundred and fifteen square feet was added previously, before what we're here today with. And today, I I don't, should I jump forward to?
I I wanna ask something about, did you actually remove habitable floor area, changing the, whatever the habitable space you said wasn't needed, into a covered porch?
No, that wasn't even there, this was all open air, so really, this area represents.
Okay, so you added a covered porch, which did not, and none, in any event, become habitable.
Yeah, the the square footage in that location wasn't needed, quite frankly, we're at, pretty much at the cap to begin with. And where we added on the second floor was really what made sense with the existing conditions. Unfortunately, there was no house below to add above, so what do you do with the space below? We did talk about doing an extension of the kitchen, but, or quickly, we realized it, it didn't make any sense to do that, so.
Okay, before we go any further, does anybody have any questions with regard to the, the foundational issue related to the plans for the second floor? I I'd like to understand how we got from thirty-two oh nine square feet to thirty-five thirty-one. We're gonna, we can go there exactly next, but I I I feel like we need to close the door on this, and what I'm gonna suggest is that we go ahead and grant the waiver. Subject to uh, some later condition, if it's necessary, to have these plans reviewed and verified with regard to square footage. And Jordan, I think just going forward, I think there was a misunderstanding as to the way it was noted. There's no way that we should be confirming anything with numbers with an applicant without seeing plans. And if, if I would have expected for somebody to say, hey, I I didn't wanna waiver, because those plans don't exist. And then we could have a discussion about that, but particularly under these circumstances, I think they would have been forthcoming quickly had it been cleared. So I I'd like to make the motion to um, to grant the waiver, subject to um, the the later opportunity to condition uh, any approval on whatever we need.
I just have one very small point, there's no plans to enclose that covered porch.
No.
And you would agree as part of this process not to do so, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's currently open.
Currently open.
No screens.
Yeah. And the existing garage wasn't touched in phase one.
Not yet.
And is located where? That would be over in this back left corner. Got it.
Or anybody have anything with regard to the waiver request? Do I have a second recommendation that we approve the waivers as set up?
Mr. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Lovera.
Yes.
Dr. Laffer.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Mr. Leaver.
Yes, all right, so, we'll, we'll go back to where we started, but I would suggest that, there's a few questions that are raised, you may just wanna sort of close all that out.
Okay.
I I just didn't, I I didn't wanna leave that hanging, I'm resolved. And we'll, we'll, we'll move that one a little bit.
Great, okay, got you, okay. Next, well, on A one, right, so I I noticed that's just page four of nine. Yes. Is A one five six seven eight nine, or is A one only page four of nine on this drawing?
A one is one sheet.
Okay, is there, is there anything in addition from five through nine that's gonna be applicable to? No, this was again pulled from the construction documents for phase one. But the first three pieces, oh, guys, check, 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 got it, okay, helpful, thank you.
Let's get to Dr. Laffer's question, which is the paramount question, which is, what's the application with regard to the additional square footage?
Yeah, so, yeah, and I get the confusion, um, so where we're here for tonight, and we're thinking of this phase two, but for you guys, it's really what we're talking about.
Mr. Shisai is a licensed architect that's.
Yes, why don't you?
When we saw license?
Two thousand thirteen?
And you appear before this board on more than one occasion, board accept your credentials, will accept them again, see you in that regard? Yeah, this, this board accepted his credentials previously, anybody object?
No.
Thank you, please.
So, okay, so, really what we're here for tonight, and I'll, I'll go into kind of what I was originally gonna talk about, is. Uh, a, a, part of the original initial discussion was, with this house, it was an existing center hall colonial. The um, the basement really is a partial basement, given the fact that there's been additions over the years to that structure. The existing basement really only occupies this front existing original portion. It's low ceilings, half of it is storage, utility, the other half of, I think right now, we're looking at finishing possibly as a gym. But it's not a large space, it's not really a modern basement, not a modern rec room for kids to hang out. So the question is, okay, where, they have their own children right now, but as they grow in the past, where, what are they gonna utilize as their rec room, more of a family group? So when you look at the floor plan, uh, what we have right now, in addition to some utility type space, mudroom, laundry, pantry, is really a kitchen, breakfast, formal dining room up front. Uh, living room on the right side, and then a den that's gonna serve more as an office, again, fairly small. So we looked at this existing, I'm calling it a two-car garage, but it's about eighteen and a half by seventeen. So i- it's, it's more like a one and a half car garage in reality, and the depth of it meets that often, and it's clearly not ideal, twenty-foot tunnel functional minimum.
I I'm gonna ask you a question, this may be one of the many reasons why having the second floor plan is important. You had two hundred and fifty square feet to play with, you put it upstairs. You had four bedrooms originally, you wound up with four bedrooms, let's talk about what you added on the second story.
Yep, so what was added on the second story was to take a undersized bedroom. Yep, so what was added on the second story was to take a undersized bedroom.
They have one. Undersized meaning habit?
I would say it was, let me double check this. The initial bedroom was twelve by ten-six. The other bedrooms are sixteen by eleven-six and thirteen by thirteen.
And, and you made the, uh, the, the ten-six by twelve habit?
We expanded in one direction to about fifteen and a half.
So you went to ten-six by fifteen and a half, and what was the balance of the space you used for?
The balance of it was a closet, uh, en suite and a secondary walk-in closet. Since the master closet was fairly small. So the closet was about seven by ten.
So the original, the original master bedroom had a walk-in closet and had an attached bath. And the renovated master bedroom has a second walk-in closet. The en suite is the second bathroom that's now en suite to that expanded bedroom?
Exactly, yeah.
So you added another bathroom?
Yes.
And is there a third bathroom on the second level?
Uh, there's three total now. One was the initial, but expanded kids' bed, to be shared by two bedrooms, the en suite and the master.
I'm sorry, just because you said expanded, so that's part of renovation, you did expand that third bathroom to be larger?
To get a double man, yes.
Okay.
But yeah, so now it's a four-bed, three-bath, as opposed to four-bed, two-bath. So again, extended fourth bedroom, uh, en suite and a, a master hall. So that, that was at, so correct, we did add square footage on the second floor that basically, you know, brought us up to the current square footage we're at.
Square fifteen square feet.
Yes.
How many bathrooms are in the whole house?
Two fifty?
Two one five, yeah. Yep, how many bathrooms in the whole house downstairs? There being one half bath. I don't wonder if there's none in the basement, right? So actually.
So there's just one left bath and then three bathrooms up with the bedrooms?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, okay, so the, the house is, that's put together with additions, you've got a two-story section and two single-story sections, right?
Yes, okay.
Um, and what is the first floor footprint of habitable space?
First floor foot existed?
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be first floor habitable floor area is one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven, so we're close to eighteen hundred.
Okay, and that space is currently being used for what?
The, the back left corner, the, the, the portion we're trying to expand into?
No. Yeah, this is on the habitable layers that's carrying on the first floor.
Oh, okay, what, what it's currently used for, right down the rear, there's a kitchen with an adjacent breakfast area. Up front, going from left to right is a den that's going to be utilized as a home office. There is a formal living room, formal dining room, uh, butlers pantry between the dining and kitchen, powder room. And then, um, mudroom, laundry, pantry. And then the back left corner is an existing garage unfinished.
And that space to the right is a covered porch, but no habitable space underneath your addition?
Yes, exactly.
Got it, and is that a two-car garage in the back?
Yeah, but barely.
What are the dimensions?
Uh, eighteen and a half by seventeen two.
Oh, God, that's not true.
Eighteen and a half in a parking direction, twenty's pretty much minimum.
And, and is the proposal to finish that exactly as it says?
Uh, yes, other than exterior, add sliders in the rear and two windows with a parked garage door.
But utilizing that square footage, no?
Exactly, yeah.
What is that square footage?
That would be, let's see, what are the differences here? Three hundred thirty-two? You ever take? Uh, three hundred twenty-two? Sorry. Yeah, what if the delta was there, um, through this back over? I have three twenty-two, okay. So pre-phase one, you're at twenty-nine ninety-four, you add this two hundred fifteen square foot on the second floor to get to the current square footage, which is thirty-two oh nine. Yes. You convert the existing garage, which is three hundred twenty, twenty square feet, to get to the thirty-five thirty-one square foot, which is the variance. And you add the detached garage off, which doesn't count towards habitable floor area. Correct, got it.
Dr. Laffer, did you get your question answered? I think it has something to do with how the garage is counted, but no, I didn't get it answered.
Okay.
So how did we get from thirty-two oh nine to thirty-five?
To do in the garage?
To thirty-five thirty-one, is that how you calculate square footage of a garage?
Yes, the garage being uninhabitable as a garage per fair hating zoning doesn't count into the habitable floor area as attached existing. By converting it to habitable area as a family room, now it becomes part of the floor area.
Right, thank you.
Yep. All right, yeah, um, okay, so, so that, that's, that's basically the, the proposal. And, and as you guys are pointing out, the, the variance issue is really the floor area cap. So thirty-two twenty's permitted, so again, we're thirty-five thirty-one, um. So, so that, that's my description of, you know, what the project phase one, that brought it, you know, before we came here. Phase two, which is why we're here, again, converting the garage to a family room. And also adding a one-car garage of thirteen by twenty-two interior, that's a little more functional for a one-car parking, as well as some additional storage. Um.
I'm sorry, what's the dimension of the, of the garage?
Thirteen by twenty-two on the interior dimension?
That's fully conforming, the variance is triggered.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Is there a reason that wasn't part of phase one, since it's conforming?
Uh, we didn't know for sure that.
You wouldn't go detached garage if you had an attached garage, so. Would you?
No, unless you want to trade off the space. Well, we didn't know, we didn't know, forgetting apparently, so.
So you said you were doing phase one because it was conforming?
Right, yes.
The, the detached garage, it's conforming part of the plan that existed when you did phase one, but you didn't build it.
Yeah.
Because now you want to trade it off for.
Not necessarily that way, it was just really that they didn't need a second detach, they didn't need a detached garage if, depending, you know, where the variance went. If it wasn't granted, for example, then they didn't necessarily need another detached garage if they hadn't existed.
Then what was the motivation? What is the motivation to finish that garage? Why do they want to do it? Why do they need to do it? What purposes are going to serve?
So, so what it really is, is at this point, it's really more of a recline. They have two very young children, maybe more in the future, long-term house, uh, the basement is really not.
That's why you were talking about the basement being so ill-suited for kids?
Yeah, they did want it on the fir-, the main floor as well, for, you know, kind of safety reasons. And if you look at the rest of the first floor, there's really kind of your traditional standard of, you know, kitchen, breakfast, dining, den, living room. This would really be a rec room, sl-, eventually more of a family room.
When was phase one completed?
It should be done in that summer months.
So when was phase two complicated, uh, contemplated with knowing that you were doing phase one?
Early on, it, it was really, we knew that the square footage wouldn't permit all of what we want to do ideally. So the thought was, in order not to hold up the project, because they'd never moved into this house, in order not to hold up the project. Rate that out as, as a phase two and pursue variance.
So you, you didn't, you didn't want to come to us for a variance with the overall project?
Correct, for, for timelessness. They didn't, they didn't need any relief for the phase one, so they, so they applied for that, so they could start getting, start to work on that. While this application is pending.
So here's a question. If you don't get this, would you have done something different in phase one?
I don't believe so.
Well, that was.
They don't need it then.
Uh, you, you must have made a determination, I would imagine, as to priority.
Yes.
Insofar as wanting that bedroom upstairs expanded, because that's an everyday thing.
Absolutely.
You need the bedroom, you need the bathroom, so this was, let's say, number two.
Correct.
If we can go get the variance, we'd like to do it, we'd get the house better livable. And it has the space for it since you're.
Yeah.
Whatever. Size your lot is.
Yeah, the lot, yeah, the lot is seventeen, almost eighteen thousand square feet.
But there was definitely a priority given to.
There, there's, there's no question, there's no question.
You would complete phase one regardless of the.
Yeah, phase one was a priority, and we, and we did talk about that early on, said, you understand that we, we may or we may not get the variance, who knows? So don't, don't predicate phase one upon getting a phase two pass.
Because it does create a little bit, maybe of a pause.
Yeah.
To look like you might just be gaming the system. Let's, let me just finish, let, let's slam it up to the limit. Ah, you know, and then tack on the finished, finished garage, which may be fine, but it does create sort of that, like. You know, and I think without bringing in the original plan for the first part of it.
Yeah.
I, it makes it a little unclear what the whole scope of the project was to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I.
It makes sense.
And I understand that, and like even, we, we, when we were talking about what the presentation was going to be, we all agreed, we have to start off with exactly what we, what we've done so far. So everyone's on board with that. But yeah, to be clear, the priority was phase one, and that was going to be done regardless of, you know, the outcome of tonight.
That's an important.
Exactly, yeah, it wasn't, hey, let's, let's pressure by doing it one way or the other, if that makes sense. Uh, just for, I just heard what it is, I did the R fifteen numbers real quick, quickly. The floor area still would be variance at R fifteen, everything else is fine, but the floor, variance required by eighty-one square feet. Even if you bump up.
And what is the, um, required area for the lot on R fifteen?
Our area, lot areas fifteen thousand, and they're at seventeen nine.
Fifteen, okay.
Because if you did.
So there's somewhere on the large, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's twenty percent of seventeen thousand, I heard forty-two? Close to thirty-six hundred. It is an oversized lot. Um, yeah, so, okay, so that was explaining that, to, to go into the variance component, which is really the important part, um. Anytime you have an oversized lot, the floor area cap is always going to be more burdensome than, you know, a lot of other lots may be. Uh, the way I look at floor area cap is that it, it makes whole sense, because if you have an oversized lot. Then you, you could end up having a monster house next to other house, and I think Fairhaven does a good job with that, you know, with the cap. A lot of towns don't have that and you see what happens. So I think in my mind, the way I look at it, is it's really a bulk thing, you, you don't want a monster house, you know, next to other homes. So I think some of the mitigating circumstances on this project is, is A, it's an existing home, so it's already going to be a smaller bulk. What's their eight-foot ceilings? Was it the twenties?
Forty, it's probably, forty, probably mid-forties.
Forty, okay, so eight-foot ceilings, um, uh, automatically, it's going to be, you know, a smaller house. But when you look at some of the other metrics, uh, I'm not saying just because it conforms in any other way that helps us, but. The lot coverage were three-quarters of the permitted amount, FAR were at two-thirds. Uh, I think very importantly, building coverage, we're not even at half of what we're permitted. And about one-third of the footprint is actually one-story additions at previous. Um, and the building height is actually seven feet under the thirty-two foot max, so it, it. By, by square foot floor area, it is obviously over the cap, but when you look at the neighborhood and the size of the homes, it does not feel like it's out of character in mind.
And this is not a monster house, obviously, that's your point, it's not a monster.
Yeah, if you look at cubic volume wise, it'd be much smaller than some of the new homes that are in form in other ways, so. Uh, the way I look at things like these, I, you know, I think Fairhaven does as well, and a lot of other towns, is that it, it's modernizing an existing home. That now, after being modernized, makes it much less likely to get knocked down and a new house to get put up, that would definitely be more vulnerable. So if, in my mind at least, if the floor area cap is primarily to restrict oversized homes in existing neighborhoods that don't conform with the neighborhood character. I, I don't think that this project is in danger of doing that, so.
Can we see the other question?
Yeah.
So we had a survey prepared by Charles Simon, as you are in O S D B G L S one chief, October one, two thousand twenty-one, we're marking that as exhibit A dash two. And we had the Fantoni residence plans prepared by Mr., um, I was. I'm sorry, double clutch on the next, Shias, three, three sheets, July eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, B A dash three, go ahead, Mr. Shias, I'm sorry.
So here we have the, the, actually, it should be labeled the left side elevation, I apologize for that. Left side elevation, this was the new mudroom entry with a small, um, a small covered entry portion over the top. These are opposed to double hung windows that are basically the existing garage door. This is the rear elevation, this was the portion that was built as part of the, uh, I guess technically a two-story addition, again, with a covered open porch beneath. This portion here is the, what is right now existing garage, and these are sliders that would open to the backyard.
Could we push it back again with a bigger picture, so we can get out of that column, thanks?
How's that look? Um, and then the garage, pretty standard, simple frame, hip roof to match the house, same slope. Front garage floor, side with the mansoir window, the other base elevation would have no penetration on it, but would look otherwise similar. Single car garage? Single car garage.
If the family room is approved, where are you going to park?
Garage intended for. The garage can accommodate a car, it may or may not be used in parking, uh, but I, I would think, and, you know, I believe it's bound to confirm this. There's part, basically a parking port in the back, again, with the new mudroom entry.
What's the size of that?
The dimension of the parking area would be. Kind of odd shape, but you could say it's about twenty-five at the rear. It starts widening out around the front corner of the house at around maybe ten, and it goes back about forty. So I would say, depending where, I, I think Fairhaven counts parking beyond the front corner of the house. It would probably accommodate just on surface parking at least three spaces.
How?
I would think one, two, three. If you were going to pull, pull line from here.
I, I'd argue never, not, not even once, just like the car in the garage, not even once. Me, I guess too, I mean, it is what it is, but I've a lot to say for the three there. And it may technically get you, but I mean, I, I think that, that was not the nature of Dr. Laffer's plan.
Oh, okay, um, I, I believe because of the covered side entry, that's really matches the family entry. I would assume the parking would predominantly be done in this back, back area, but I believe it does.
You can barely turn as the garage is now, you can, you'd have, you have to K-turn to get into the garage, you can't just turn it. Uh, you need twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet in order to do that, you don't have a mountain, and, um, so all you're going to be able to do is nose in. You said it was ten, it's not ten, is, is that the, the, the pinch point's ten?
Like right, right here?
That's the driveway with it to the house?
Yeah, it's ten feet here?
What's it to the house?
Uh, twenty-one five?
That's, that's helpful.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just speaking of the, the actual K there, right now, that's one. I guess they could widen if they wanted, and again, from that pinch point back is about another forty, and at the back, you're talking about twenty-five feet worth. I, I don't know for sure where the, where they're going to park, I would assume because that entry is there, that's probably going to be where they're, you know, going in and out of the house predominantly.
Yeah, and, and, and just to clarify, you certainly can stack three cars in there if you want, it, it just is a practical matter, it's going to be too hard to get, you know?
Will they just compression to each other at the ten foot? I know, I know, that's true.
I'm not saying you'd be parking three there daily, but technically it fits great, plus the garage. Why'd you guys decide only a single car versus a double guard, uh, double car garage? Because I don't think they saw the need for a two-car garage. Did, did you anticipate? I'm just curious.
Well, we had to bring up swear minute, Mr. Fanclis testified somewhere, so it's up to you when you want to do it. It doesn't, it doesn't really change anything.
No.
No one uses their garage that way, you made it two cars, they just have one jump, they'll have a jump.
But we've seen it, we've seen an increase in town of any habitable floor in the town and having a detached garage, right? When you look at a lot of the new construction around town, so I was trying to. Right, I totally understand, so just trying to drive that a little bit.
Well, well, I, I'm, I'm going to, say that again? Say that again?
In town, a lot of new construction, they maxed out the habitable square. Footage of the house and just put a detached garage off of it.
Right, that they detach it till they don't pay the town fee.
Correct. So that's what I was trying to noodle through here and get a little fidelity of the thought process, like single detached versus double detached. Or extra wide detached so you can get suburban in, right? If you're gonna have a better house and eventually more kids and whatnot, so trying to keep.
There's not a, there's not a coverage issue to make it two car.
No, it, yeah, it, it could be a two car, it, it could at some point, well, technically. It could get harder maneuvering to.
Right, you could.
Right, yeah, it, it would be harder maneuvering.
Right.
Because it's John.
No, you just, you make it ninety degrees to the, to the house, and the driveway, follow the driveway line. Just drive straight up. But you can't really, can't turn out, it, it's just unfortunate, just the way it is.
There is a man door on the side of the garage where you're planning, and it's a walkway.
Great turn, man door.
Uh, no, right now, no.
Yeah. Take it fence that's there, is that essentially gonna remain minus?
Yeah, that is, that even door, but I, I would imagine the picket fence would possibly move back and then. Um, you know, may, maybe a catty corner here to the corner of the house, but they do wanna keep the backyard enclosed. So, so somehow it would link to, they, they wanna keep this patio. Uh, apparently it's been maintained during construction, a lot of times these have to get torn out after, but apparently the contractors been, been doing a good job of, uh. Keeping it, you know, intact, so I would imagine there'd be some sort of gate connection here with, you know, gate access.
Can we see the other two elevations?
There is a. Those are not shown here. Photos may have been, I believe photos were submitted.
Hold on a second, you don't have all four sides of the house?
There was one, I drew one that was affected by part of the phase one. That would be the right side, the front side of the him along, this was unaffected.
That was one of the, the checkup items, yeah.
You didn't do a standard ass bow, you don't have to do an ass bow to get started on, I mean, pretty substantial renovation, huh?
No, not various, most towns, I don't think you do.
Did you do, did you do the whole house? When you do an ass bow, you're only doing the measurements and then straight data construction, you're not doing the elevations?
That, similarly, if you're doing a portion of a house, it's something like, let's say you're doing one, it affects one side. You're gonna draw the sides that are affected, you're not gonna draw everything, you know, neither. Also, it's just more time, it's more money, it's a big fight.
All right, but, but following that logic, touch the three sides of the house based on what you've done, they're only showing this.
Yeah. Well, previously, as far as what we're talking about, it's for, for, uh, part of phase two tonight.
No, you're, the, the garage addition touches two sides, the rear and the north elevation. And then the addition on the second floor faces to the south and to the rear.
Yes.
He's not counting that because of the space.
I can't remember a time where I haven't been able to see what it. I, I mean, it actually, it's relevant to me, it, it looks awkward. And, 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 and I do my stuff, so I'm sure it will be awkward, but I'm, I'm curious as to what it's gonna look like, you tell me, I, I, I can't find out. I have to wait.
Are you changing the front facade in any way?
What's that?
Are you changing the front facade in any way?
No, I think the owners opted to do like a whitewash on the front.
Yeah.
Now, that was, that was pretty much it.
The paint of the brick white.
Yeah.
So this is just the back you're showing us now?
This is the back one that's affected by the proposed project. This is the garage here and here, I said, yeah.
I mean, if it, if it helps to alleviate, we'd love to see. Front wrenching with this house, I am very familiar with this house because it is. Block and a half away from my house, about why my bike pass, uh, passing constantly, actually my friend used to live there. Uh, if you're not changing the front facade of that house. It's not gonna impact the neighborhood in any way, shape or form.
The front facade's totally shit, it was leaking right now.
The side went, you're not within two hundred feet since.
No, no, it is. Mike, I wish it was worth less than two hundred feet, I wouldn't be.
So, Mr. Shias, as I look at the survey and I look at the, uh, I guess that would be like the north facing elevation.
Yes, basically, we'll open at this elevation and this one.
Right, so, so the north facing, where's the garage?
Garage is right here, you're talking about the existing garage?
Yeah.
Existing garage entered right here.
Okay, so as I look at the house from the north, looking south, the garage is on my left, right?
Say that again?
As I'm standing to the north of the house, and I look back to the south.
Yeah.
Staring at your north elevation, the garage is on the left.
Uh, yes. Existing.
It's not a garage, that's the house. That doesn't show the existing, it shows what you wanna do, that's.
Yeah, yes.
That's the proposal.
Like, all right, okay, so I guess you're, you're referring to the proposed detached garage.
No, I was talking about the house that sits and trying to figure out what's what, so I can't make sense of it. Cause the, the thing on the right, on the, on the lower elevation looks like the garage, but it's not the garage. What's that?
What is that? This elevation, yeah, this is, uh, these are sliders going to the backyard. Currently, there's a window or two, similarly to this.
Where's the covered porch, the two hundred and fifteen square foot covered porch on the first floor?
Uh, right here. So this basically, basically right here was the addition.
That's an open covered porch?
Open covered porch. Yeah, it's not like, on at the end, it's like two foot, like.
So all that's covered, that's a sliding glass door, assuming that matches the one on the exterior wall.
So here, here's what I'm struggling with, you know, if you've got a very low roof line, and that's very helpful in terms of the mass of the house. You've got a, a covered porch that is for all intents and purposes from the outside looking in. It's space, square footage, you don't, it's center, I said earlier tonight, it, it looks and feels like house, so it's two hundred and fifteen bigger. The, the garage that you wanna renovate is already there, and so. It's not really gonna change the way it looks today, but I don't really have any sense how it looks today. Do we have photos of this project as to today?
Yeah, there's, there's some Todd and Jordan, uh, report.
They submitted a few photos and.
Referring to the photos attached to the application. Those are actual photographs?
Yes.
Color, you have this? I, I, what I have is black and white, and I can't. So what do we have, A dash four, or how many photographs collectively?
Five.
Five photos of the subject house, subject property. Who took those photograph?
Yeah, the, the homeowner.
You, you've been to the property?
Yes.
Shias, those photographs depict the way the property currently exists accurately, fairly?
That, that might, what I saw that.
It said that somebody identified, cause I don't have the homeowner, who apparently someone.
Yep.
Okay, so, yes, so there's photographs marked collectively as A dash four. Fairly and accurately depict the, uh, conditioned properties of this stuff.
Yes, there, there may be siding that's already been applied at the rear, other than that. Everything looks, yeah, structure is exactly what it's designed.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Shias, the, the, the question, Al just, just said, you know, why wasn't the playroom area put? Underneath the, uh, the new addition on that side of the house, um, was, was that?
Yeah, it, no, not really, because it would have been in the middle of everything, so you already had, you had the kitchen. You had the breakfast, you had the living room, and it was kind of catty corner with them, so they did want a little bit of separation. That, that was a thought there, it didn't really make sense for them to have it under, you know, under that building structure. And the dimensions of it wouldn't have been. Probably been twelve by eighteen, for example.
And what's the dimension of this project?
Uh, seventeen two by eighteen six. The current garage size.
If you, if you kept that current garage there and added the detached garage as well, you wouldn't be here, correct?
Yes, correct, yeah.
If they kept the current garage and added the detached garage, they wouldn't need a variance.
Right, cause it's still.
Yeah, I, look, I, I think that based on how I'm understanding the layout, kinda, why, I gotta see.
Here.
It, it seems to me that there really is an issue with the, um, with the side of the house where the garage is. And I think there's a legitimate issue there in terms of what sort of space you're gonna have, you know, for cars and, and whatnot. A, and I, I have this strange feeling that if I could. Better feel for this, that I, I, I don't get comfortable with it, but I, I, I don't can't even feel for it. Uh, it's the lack of plans. It's the best picture. Looking at this picture is the most helpful thing in terms of understanding, you know, what, what it's eventually gonna take. I thought we. I thought that's enough. This is the, um, I'm pointing, I would want to point to exhibit eight dash four, one of the photographs, A dash four. This is the, the, the covered one area?
Yeah.
You, your plans don't show, your plans don't show that, I mean, I, I, I know it may be on there technically. But your plans don't show me what this house looks like, I, I feel like there's no third dimension to it, and, and it's just.
Do you need like, so what, what, we need rendering, let's do that?
I, 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 anybody else feeling it, it just may be. Don't, you good?
No, I'm not, I'm confused, I'm confused about the phase one, phase two, I'm confused about the renderings, confused about the drawings. I know the house, I do know the house well, I've been in it several times.
I think, you know, I'm kind of grasping what's going on, but I think it to, uh, the chairman's point, it would be much more. Helpful if we had everything, the original, the other, the, the south side, you know, a full. Yeah, vision of what's going on with this house, phase one, phase two.
Yeah.
You know.
Rendering pictures, you're just missing data points.
And I would agree with the chairman, if I'm looking at this rear elevation. Right, I, I, this, this is not communicating that this is a covered, you, you need, you need. You need this angle. And, and I guess, uh.
And, and the problem with this is.
From this.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if we had all the information, we can make a decision. And I like what you're doing, not tearing the house down, there have been some renovations or actually tear downs within that neighborhood. Uh, there's a house on the corner, the house across the street, where they tore down the center hall colonial and dropped McMansion. And they're, you know, well within, uh, our guidelines to do that. So, you know, if we could have the plans, I mean, I think this is something that if we could wrap our head around it, we'd be like, oh, okay, this is a great idea.
Okay.
I can't speak for everybody, but.
I, I agree.
Did they reshape and resize the section? Proposing to put these sliders in there? Does that need a window in there?
No, we're not, we're not gonna have a record.
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Shivetti has a question.
I mean, they put new house wrapped around that, did they, did they resize?
Have they resized it? Wait. They sided all of that? Oh, okay, they, they sided up to where the doors are, so it's partially sided right now.
I, I don't, you know, but the plan of doing this one in a new beginning, that's the work, can't get the house signed, you're not gonna get a C O. Why did this wait so long to get to us, if, if the review letter was issued August thirty-first, what's been going on?
There was an issue with the, there was a weird quirky, and this was my fault, there was a quirky issue that the Romson Borough Clerk. Also needed to get notified because there was two properties within the two hundred foot boundary, and apparently.
This property is within two hundred feet of the boundary of Romson.
Yeah, but wasn't that just last meeting?
That's just the last meeting.
So that's, that, that's just thirty days ago, the, the plans were all put together in January. I, I, but I, I think you already know, it's very off putting to get it in two phases. But we're, we're adults, we can deal with it, okay, but it's off putting, it's off putting to not get all the plans. It's off putting to not have, more important, it's more than off putting, it doesn't give, we don't have a sense of what this is.
Yeah.
Because as I look at your two dimensional drawings, and then I look at the handful of pictures, i- i- it's not lining up.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with, with what Mr. Consol said. At least the spirit of what you're doing, constructing within the footprint of what was already there, keeping the road low risk line. Coming up with a good combined renovation to modify this house, make it worth money, like, like, we generally. Understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't understand, you've got yourself to where you are, and I'm not comfortable, and I don't think other people are relative to what you're showing. So I think it's, I'm very disappointed that you don't have more for us tonight, and I'm not asking you to go off and, and just do a whole bunch of renderings. Cause we, we don't generally have that.
Yeah.
But, but you're not, you're not doing the application justice tonight, with both the haphazard and lengthy process of getting in here. A, and then how you displayed it before us. I also think, by the way, that the detached garage that you're proposing, I almost prefer it wasn't off. Because I, I don't think, it, it doesn't, it doesn't complement what I think the house is gonna look like. I, I don't know if one car garage is enough, I couldn't tell you to do two, but it just kinda feels like. We would like to see a project that when it's done is gonna make sense. Good renovations, you never knew they were renovated, right? It was just the house that was developed that way. I don't understand, we're talking about removing the garage. I don't have any sense of how the cars are gonna work, those kids get old, people come over eventually when you're done, and they need to put their stuff, so. Like, it matters, you're proposing to remove the garage, like, how are you gonna do that stuff? May not be the only thing that matters, but it's relevant.
We discussing it among ourselves at this point.
Do you, do you wanna ask to have a shower, do you wanna talk to your client?
Yeah, no, I think we, we wanna have a carry, uh, so that we could respond to and, and, and come in. You understand that.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess.
I, I get it.
Can I just ask, um, it see, it comes down to me that there were certain decisions made, certain design decisions. And the only way we could proceed without a full picture of the project is to decide that. Those decisions are not up necessarily for our review. Based on the size of the lot, based on what has been described to us. We have to either be willing to sort of mentally fill in what's missing in a way that makes us comfortable. To get a full picture.
Right.
It may not even be technically legally required that we have a full picture. But in order to get to, yes, here's your variance, the lot, build your, you know, take your garage away. It seems like, what, you know, we're struggling to try to get there under the requirements for the variance.
Yeah.
It, it's only gonna help your case.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just, just so I could share, I'm sorry, just so I. Variance is on the floor area?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. That's all of it, it's just the square footage. Given, given the chairman's point, I, I'm a little bit unhappy that this wasn't presented in its entirety. Because the family still hasn't moved into the house, uh, the house is still under construction. And we would have appreciated it much better had we looked at the entire scope of the project, rather than a phase one, phase two. And it just doesn't endure itself to us to, to present it this way.
But the question is, you know. Does it mean we have to kick the can down the road? I mean, let's say like Mr. Shivetti suggested, you know, why didn't they put the playroom where the covered? I mean, let's say like Mr. Shavetti suggested, you know, why didn't they put the playroom where the covered porch is? Well, that would have been a subjective dis- design decision. Hey, let's put the player in there. They decided not to do that. Does that matter? Does that matter?
Technically, no.
They still would have needed a variance, yes?
Correct.
Hold, hold on a second. I I think that you had it exactly right, that uh first of all, I I think you, I think you established correct. That there is information that's lacking and is not clearly communicated. So in order to proceed tonight, we need to fill in the blanks ourselves and agree with the conclusions that have been drawn on that end, that it doesn't matter, and it shouldn't matter to us. There's clearly been that vibe running throughout all of this. And so Pat, let let's have that discussion because if this is a C variance, this needs a bare majority. And if enough people feel as though they can fill in the blanks based on what we have tonight, then let's keep talking about it.
Flexible as opposed to obviously not.
I I don't, I I I don't know that I've heard all that much as to the support for the variance.
I mean, it would be a C two, yeah. I I I mean, my feeling about it in a subjective way is that because it's a large lot, maybe there was the feeling like, oh, you know, whatever we decide to do, as long as it's tasteful and, you know, a good plan.
And 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 preserving the house and not
We can establish the elements of the C two without really getting down into the nuts and bolts of, you know, why'd you put that here, or why didn't you do that, or, you know? Another example is with the parking. The parking requires the number of spaces behind the front yard setback. So maybe we're getting into it a little deeper than was anticipated in terms of uh the decisions that were made. I don't know. I could probably fill in for myself because they're not knocking the house down. It's not a new McMansion. You know, I think it's, we probably like it more than we like it if we saw the whole thing.
I agree with you. And 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 my inkling is, I don't have a huge problem with that here, but the problem is, you know, as Mr. Barberi just said, you know, we're having an issue with the parking. We could solve that issue, that we could see and have measurements and, you know, the proper documentation for that.
The question is for our job, though. I mean, I know we really go above and beyond in this board, you know, like when you walk out of here with a plan, like, you gotta plan, you know? The question is, we're not being given the opportunity to to look that deeply. Are we given enough of an opportunity to entertain it under a C two without the whole picture being being presented?
Because those go back, they'll get the renderings, they'll get the photos, they'll come back, and we'll be having the same discussion.
It will, it will be upset, and we might say
No, but I think, but I, but I think it might be helpful in the analysis to have that, you know?
I
For at least
It can hurt.
That's okay.
Certainly can hurt, and I
But
You might go for one or two votes that you need by bringing this in, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. You know, I I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I would be much more comfortable, and I think, I'm not speaking for people on this board, but there's definitely people here who would be a lot more comfortable.
Well, I look, from 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 where I sit, one of those a lot, a lot more comfortable, and certainly not comfortable tonight. Uh I wanna understand whether or not it makes sense to remove the sensible garage that this structure currently has. And I will look at this when it comes back or when you guys vote on it tonight, trying to figure out whether or not this plan made sense. And it's too bad that you're already so far gone that you've committed to this or nothing. Because I'm looking at this lot, I'm looking at this house, and it's a very smart looking house, it really is. But you're really creating a problem with this driveway issue. And, you know, it's 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 nearly sided already. I I mean, you know, you're you're all in already on taking it out, and um it it's, I'm struggling with whether or not that makes a lot of sense. Um and and I I think that if this were a year ago or a year and a half ago, that there would be a discussion about, you know, could this house have a few extra hundred square feet, and if so, where would you put it? And then, does the house work? But, you know, I I don't feel robbed of that analysis, even though the project's super far along. Because I didn't create that problem, but that's the way I I I'm gonna look at it. Taking away the garage. You know, you're creating an issue with the driveway. As sharp as it looks from the front, it's not gonna look very good with a bunch of cars sticking out the side yard. It's really not.
So you're thinking if if the, if the garage remains, that it would provide a turning space where cars are in the garage?
The the first thing when I look at this layout, I recognize that that is a very difficult space to work with with regard to the garage. I've worked with garages like that, you know, barely enough room, but you do decay turn in and out from the deep part of it. You 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 are on a really nice lot in a really nice neighborhood, and you can expect that you're going to have a lot of kids, a lot of friends, a lot of cars, a lot of people, and you should have room to put them there. They should not be in the street. You've got more room than most people. So what you're doing is you're creating a problem
Yeah.
with an asset. You've got an asset, but you're throwing it away for a room. I get it. A- a- and the lot is oversized.
Yeah.
We we always call anything that's above the minimum oversized, but this one is truly oversized. No, I'm seeing, I'm seeing that opportunity in the back where it would have been hidden. I'm seeing an opportunity under where you put the other thing. Um the porch looks very large. I I don't understand why it didn't become a room. I I I feel like you outsmarted yourself.
The um, as far as the location of the garage, part of what brought the homeowners to this property was a large backyard. So initially, I might have suggested push the garage back a little further, possibly have a turnaround. But the homeowners were pretty against that because that was really the the ma- one of the major amendments that brought it there.
But but what you also have, and you can't see it on the plans, is a massive bit of roof that goes over the garage. So you've elected to put your addition where the first floor addition might have very easily gone. When you could have done whatever bump out on the second floor you felt like you needed towards the garage, you've already got a bunch of that space already. By the way, it's not offensive. I'm not arguing that you're building an ugly house. I'm just saying that these pieces moved around a slightly different way. Two examples before you tonight. Two examples, of people that came in with their own ideas of what they wanted to do. They sat before us, whether they lied or not, they left tonight with approvals, and said that they were really happy with what they wound up with. If this had come before us, I don't know that we would wind up with this layout. I said, I don't know whether they lied or not.
About being happy.
About being unhappy, about being happier with what they laughed with than what they originally presented. Because sometimes it does take thinking outside the box. And so I, most of us have been through this situation that you're dealing with.
It's actually unfortunate. I had thought that I think they're not allowed to come in for like a pre-application meeting with the zoning board. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're not allowed.
They're not allowed to.
Planning board has that.
Because a lot of times we wind up doing this as a formal meeting, and then the second time is the chart.
At the end of the day, it, we're just, I I actually, I'm trying to help, I'm not trying to be a jerk.
No, I I I know how you, I know how you are.
And so I I
In a good way.
It it isn't that you would have to do it the way that I see it. The point is that if we all looked at it together, we might well have had ideas that would have been easier to accept. As it sits, you've got one plan that you can do from here.
Yeah.
I would need more information to be able to evaluate that plan. But I'm troubled by the idea that you're locked into a single opportunity from here. Okay. So do we wanna see if first Mr. Brodsky wants to request to be carried? If not, do we then wanna put it to the board members to see whether they want to proceed or demand they have the additional slant before they proceed? Yeah, and by the way, I'm perfectly happy. If people feel like they can, they can judge it based on what they have, and I I don't feel any need to extend it. I I I told you where I'm at, but I don't know. Where are you, Mr. Ridgeway? Would you be comfortable tonight based on the information that you have?
Yeah.
No. Todd, would you be comfortable basically with what you have?
I'm on the fence.
You're on the fence. Morgan?
I have to front Warren.
All right, I don't think I need to do that. I, Mr. Brodsky, before you ask to carry, I would like to at least give any members of the public that are here an opportunity to speak.
Of course.
Um, I I'm just gonna do that real quick. Any members of the public here have any questions or comments regarding this application? Predictably, the answer was no, but I wanna make sure that no one waited this long to say something wonderful about this this resident.
Requested documents. It's obviously the full house, floor plans, um elevations on all sides, or photographs.
I don't know how you post construction plans based on what we've got. I I I would just want what we normally get. Have all the elevations. I'd like to see the existing floor plan, what the additions look like on top. And with an opportunity to see how they contrast, I'd like to see a working plan. I think when you're removing a two car garage, two car I think, I think you, I think it's reasonable to ask how it's gonna work. And if this is it, then, you know, that that's fine, but let's get dimensions and let's
Um, and on that, and quite frankly, it is tricky to like, what do you bring in? So I I'm, just so I can get a little feedback on this, to make sure I'm, you know, not in this position, you know, next meeting. Uh would you like previously existing plans, like the original plans that we started with?
I I I don't, I don't want you to spend his money where you don't need to. I I think that what we all wanna see is your to be built as finished plans like we normally would. If some of that is an as-built view of the front, so be it.
Okay.
But that's certainly a a a question that we ask, not that we wanna see previous
Yeah.
versions of the plans, but that that we ask, did you envision this in other ways and why didn't that work?
Yeah.
That would you hear in this situation?
Sometimes it's a surprise. In addition to the full proposed
Yeah.
People will bring in the layout and they'll color code it. This is what was there. This is what we added. This one, this is what we're proposing to do in phase two, and you can see the different colors.
Okay.
It's easier for the board to follow.
Yeah.
As for the parking, I I would just ask that you take your existing survey, think it through, do some measurements, and show us how cars are gonna move in and out. And if you're gonna put the garage there, as it sits, just think it through and be prepared to talk about why it, why it's fine.
Okay.
In my letter, I also recommended or not recommended, requested topographic information in the area of the garage, so if you can pair that.
Topographic survey included?
Just in that area, just to demonstrate um any impact of stormwater, how how um garage would rain.
Yeah, thanks.
Jordan, I I mean, that that's, yeah, that's like a it's a real money. I- if if they're not adjusting those things, and I don't think they're proposing to change the driveway or the grade over there, what what would be the need for that?
Just to see how a structure like this would impact the neighborhood, and you're increasing the runoff there.
It is pretty flat for site.
But the only addition was on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
And it's there.
The garage.
Well, that's not an addition, though. Nothing's changing, right?
He's talking about
The detached garage?
Right. How that affects, I guess, I don't know.
I I look, I appreciate it. I I understand it's nice to get more information. They don't need our permission for the garage. I I and I know what a topographical survey costs. I I wouldn't wanna see you have to spend that money unless there are direct reasons. Could also be the type of thing that if in fact the board saw, hit the grant, but believe, believe that it's necessary to be the addition as a petition to be processed. Yeah, if you decided at that point to use it, as opposed to a prerecorded, but it's up to the board. We'll swing too far in the other direction. Anything further, Mr. Brodsky?
No.
Do we have a date?
Did you request a carry?
I did.
Oh.
Um, how much, how much time do you think you need to do the plans?
I I don't know what the next meeting's available, January's available. It's a war that's on this park. I'm not sure what's needed. What's the day is?
That's the big time.
Sandy, what, what we, this is part of a discussion that we're gonna have. Um, what what do we have right now?
We have the one that's complete. And we would have this. So we're doing applications during the rework them, correct?
Yeah.
So, what's that date, Sam?
January twelfth.
All right. You made the request.
Yep, yes, I did.
Did you give a stipulation?
Uh, I will, I agree.
I'll make the motion to carry to January twelfth without the obligation on that.
So. No further notice, right?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the matter is the Fanta尼 matters carried to January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, without the necessary renotice, any interested parties, and there was none in response. Mark the calendar for corollary, be noted for the notice, and Mr. Brodsky has stipulated an extension time, which the board has to act through and including January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Correct, Mr. Brodsky?
Confirmed, correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Now, what's been marked, please leave with us that uh one street, and these photographs are gonna make their way down to Sandy. They've been marked.
They're marked?
Yeah. No less than ten. And what I would suggest when you send them, contemporaneously, send them to Mr. Rizzo, so he has a chance to take a look from that side. There's no delay. It's ten thirty. Um, a couple of administrative items. There's this uh unique discussion with regard to fences and walls. And Mr. Ireslaski, so all those things need to be covered. Um, are you gonna walk us through the administrative stuff?
Thanks, guys.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes from November third?
Yes, yes.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the minutes?
No.
Anybody wanna make a motion regarding the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna Payola, resolution. Everybody read it?
Yes.
Anybody have any comment?
Negative.
Question?
Negative.
Anybody in motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. LaBarra?
Yes.
Andrew Loffer?
Yes.
Mr. Cella?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so you got two other things. Mike's gonna be last. Um, so there was circulated, um, in the residents here who who started this discussion. Um, some materials related to uh some proposed changes to uh the ordinances related to uh fences. Um, has everyone had an opportunity to view those in turn? Has anyone?
I'm going to recuse since I'm on the corner with big trees in front of my house. Well, maybe you shouldn't fix. You have big trees in front of your house, too.
So, um, the the reason this is, we're we're not gonna get into this. I didn't expect it, and and I've told Ms. Ferguson coming into tonight that we wouldn't be able to, most likely. Um, so I would ask the people to take a look at it. What um what happens with ordinances in New Jersey is that when changes to the ordinances are contemplated, the discussion is had between the planning board and the council. Um, the mayor and council have asked us to take a look at it and give us their thoughts. Um, because that's a courteous thing for them to do, and they thought that, given that this would be a variance, you know, they wanted to know what our take was on it. Um, so I would ask that everybody take a look at it, and, you know, uh we should, we should be able to make some time, I I would assume, uh in January to be able to address it, assuming that the two matters. The only thing I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is any discussion of the subject should be generic and general to the ordinances and not per change any particular property, particularly since any particular property may subsequently result in an application to the board. Yeah, that's right. So I mean, getting, get getting to Pat saying that she would recuse because she's on the corner. Um, a- as proposed, the changes wouldn't affect that property because she is near a shopping center or a a service station. Um, but be, but beyond that.
It would, from what I know, but it doesn't matter.
May- maybe, maybe I'm referring to titles that were not, were not truly limiting of this. But but the issue is that, you know, this is something for us to consider as a standalone issue. I don't know how many of you have read the ordinance with regard to fences prior to tonight, or who will read it prior to January. Please take a look at it, and you can have a further discussion at that time. Lastly, um, in two thousand and six, uh I was um put on this board because I opened my big mouth. I had a problem doing a renovation, and I got put on this board in the spring. And there was discussion by the board members with regard to what the board was all about. And there was um some feelings that we needed to change the attorney uh that was representing the board. And starting in January of two thousand and seven, we interviewed a number of people. And we retained Mike um to represent the zoning board in Fairhaven. Um, and I've been with him ever since then. And I say a lot, and I'll say it right, but I I know zoning boards and I know planning boards. And this board is an exemplary board, one of the best boards that I am familiar with in state because of how we do what we do. And we do none of that without Mike Irving. He has been such a tremendous guiding force for me personally and for Fairhaven. Um, and I am heartbroken um that he is leaving. But Michael has told us that he's looking to slow down, um, and I respect him so much, I have not once asked him to reconsider. Because he deserves that time with his family. And so I just, I just can't tell you how much I'm in this. Well, I do appreciate that. I appreciate the kind words. I was hoping you'd beg me at least once or twice. And and although I I appreciate your kind words, you give me much too much credit. I have the privilege of working with a very fine board. And I'm pretty much along for the ride. You guys do all the hard work. So thank you. It's been my privilege. Move to adjourn. Yeah. So the um, so the substance of um the issue with regard to council for twenty twenty-three. Relates to that um issue of whether or not this board will do a fair and open process. Or will do something else. The latest update I have from the borough is that no decisions have been made with regard to what council is doing. Leadership has the issue usually comes from them and usually uh the boards follow suit. In anticipation of being in a position of really having a direction. There has been some discussion with regard to um asking Mr. Kovats, who currently represents the planning board. To step in and do his best to fill this this seat, these huge shoes next to me on the right. Um, and Mr. Kovats is available. Um, and so a decision with regard to reputation for twenty twenty-three was made in January by the newly constituted zoning board. But uh I raised the issue because to the extent that anybody wants to do something uh more comprehensive. With regard to fair and opening soliciting proposals of other people. We would have to do that right away and we would need to get on that right away. Um, and so that decision needs to be made tonight.
Is there enough lead time? Like four weeks to go from seeking it and having somebody ready for January twelfth?
So the the normal course is that after the election. The the solicitation is put together and it goes out. It usually is out by now, but it's not that late. It always is compressed. If, in fact, the decision could not be made, planning board appointed an engineer and uh and that contract's not worked out for twenty twenty-two. I think it's only twenty twenty-two, a few more days. So, you know, things sometimes get slowed down. And so, you know, if that were to to happen, you know, and we begged Mr. Irene to be back here in January, I trust that he could find a night for us. So, yeah, I mean, if we wanted to solicit, yeah, I I think we could.
Usually what happens is the the RFPs, request for proposals. We go out now or a week or so before now, that's when most of them are going out. And then we see those and we submit our proposals, they're gathered, and then the board reviews them when they reorganize. Some boards then decide that they wanna do interviews, most just pick off a list that they know, people that they're familiar with. That's if you're gonna do fair and open, if you're gonna do not, and the borough collectively, I think, has been doing fair and open for the last several years. Prior to that, for a period of time, we were doing non-fair and open. Which it's a strange name, but what it means is you don't have to solicit proposals from people because you know. We want Jordan, or we want Mike, or we want Drew, whoever. But in that case, the only difference is that person cannot contribute at all, even though they call it non-fair and open. So you can do it either way.
What what's the difference?
To to the political bodies in the.
Oh, contribute money.
Yes.
They can't pay to play.
That's exactly right. In a fair and open, you can pay, you can contribute, you just have to disclose. So it's it's a it's a honest system they have. But but the mechanics of it is, if you're gonna go fair and open, a lot of towns like to do that because they like the name. They publish the RFPs. And it would be going out now. Most of the towns put them out within the last two weeks, and then they're gonna be due back in between generally now and Christmas. You don't need a lot of time.
Is there any way to have Mr. Kovats as like an acting, reacting zoning board guy until?
So.
So, so. We can beg.
So, so look, so I I'm on the planning board for another few minutes, um, and I've been working with Mr. Kovats for a number of years. Doug is great, um, and it, you know, I fully support Doug coming in and and considering taking this board over. You know, sort of remiss that we didn't even talk about Jordan. You know, I I am still on the board this board next year, uh, as my term is not expiring. And and it's my intent to to fully support reappointment of seeing him and Jordan. As I, he really only just got started, um, but I feel like we got what we were looking for, which was a conversion to an engineering review. Um, and I think he's doing a nice job. So to me, I've never liked fair and open when we already had our mind made up. Because what you have is people in smaller law firms that are taking time to fill things out, that people don't really have any real intent on reviewing. You know, Fairhaven's a quirky place, I'm gonna need to tell you that, uh, Mr. Kovats kinda knows what's going on. And um so for me, um, I'm very comfortable with the idea of bringing Doug in um for twenty twenty-three and then I would take it from there. I'm also okay asking Doug to do something uh on an interim basis. If the board wanted to solicit proposals. I would just suggest to you that if you wanna solicit them, um, please take them seriously and, you know, consider that we need to form a committee tonight. That pretty easy to work it out, since you do it, then they would need to do what we did last year. Did we do this? We did this.
Is it one, one-year appointments? Yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, my 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 two cents, I don't see the advantage of.
Make it a fair and open.
It sounds so kind of.
I'm more comfortable with the horse than the race.
See, one, one of the reasons I wanted to let you know, and I called Todd earlier, and he told you all tonight. Was so that if you went fair and open, there would be time, because what happens is, most of us who do this work, we all play in the same sandlot and we know. So even though Red Bank or Long Branch, whoever, may be doing fair and open. If they know Mike Irene's been in Long Branch for thirty-six years, nobody's gonna submit a proposal unless they're told, hey, by the way, he's not coming back.
Got it.
So I wanted to let you all know so that the word could go out. If you're interested, submit a proposal, the board will review it. So if you wanted to do fair and open, people would have time to submit the proposals. Now, whether you're interested in culling through all those, as Todd says, if you, if you have in mind what you wanna do. Then you may wanna do the non-fair.
Todd, is is Doug gonna stay on his planning?
That's a decision to be made by the planning board, because Doug's willing to come and has the night.
Yeah, the reason I, the reason I said that is I think it would be pretty amazing to have the opportunity where you have the continuity from a legal perspective. Between planning and zoning. Has it ever happened before?
I'm the planning board attorney and the zoning board attorney in West Homer. See, that happens.
Yeah, I.
Well, the other thing is Doug's familiar with the ordinance.
But that's what I'm saying. I think it's advent, what I'm saying is I think it's advantageous and you don't get presented with many opportunities where you potentially could end up with that. Because how many times do we say, oh, my God, there's an inconsistency from the planning board? Well, hey, if the lawyer is on both, right, that's an extra version.
I think there's an opportunity for that to be a plus. I think that hitting the ground running is super important. I think that, you know, there there there's so many things that I could say about Mike. And I feel like doing any comparing is is not really fair, because I don't think anybody compares. But I love Doug. He's a great guy. He's given a lot to Fairhaven. And, you know, he understands how to run a meeting. He understands how how we work. You know, he's he's well-respected. Um, you know, he's good. He's good. And so if you want to solicit people, you're not gonna find a pleasure, you're not gonna find anybody better than Doug. You may find somebody you you prefer, but you gotta figure out what your criteria is. There's a whole process to it.
Doug's good. I guess we we worked with him with the the Duncan, he was on, he was somehow involved in the Duncan application. Was there a planning board hearing at the school auditorium?
Right, we started at the planning board where Doug was, then came to us, and then we packed.
He was very knowledgeable about things.
Yeah, if he.
And very calm, cool.
He's already part of the system. I mean, I think it makes sense, you know, to break. I mean, we might get somebody who's great, but it's gonna take them six months to get up and running.
How long did it take you, Jordan?
I'm still learning.
It isn't easy.
Yeah, you know, I've listened. I've been here for almost two years, just over two years, three years now, and I'm, you know. So.
If you do fair and open, you may wanna have Sandy invite Doug to submit a proposal. No guarantees. If you don't do fair and open, then you pretty much decided what you wanted to do.
Can I, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to uh hire Doug Kovats as our.
I can't make that motion.
No, because the re, that will be done in reorganization by whoever the board members.
Can I make a motion then not to go fair and open?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, we can just do an all-in-one favor.
I'm going to abstain, just because I'm out here next year and I don't want.
We barely got the note.
I, yes, Mike, pleasure.
All mine, all mine, bro.
And Drew, you're, you're, you're done after this year.
You're here.
He's on the council.
Yeah, another one's springboarding at the politics.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just wanted because I don't wanna forget, Peralta, remember that resolution? Isn't that the one, Sandy, that we held because there was a blank and they were supposed to confirm?
Square footage.
Right, and it was gonna be plugged in and it was gonna be adopted. So I just don't want that to fall off the radar screen, because so far as I know. I assume they didn't come back with the square footage, no?
I I was not part of the application, so.
Okay. They did not.
And they were reminded after.
Okay, well, I I guess it sits, but I just.
Does it expire after the thirty-first?
We're supposed to adopt the resolution within forty-five days of the date of the approval, but, but, but. But the, all someone could do is say, go to court, to get an order, requires to adopt the resolution. The resolution is done, subject to them providing the number, so I don't really think anybody could take the board the test. I just don't want it to be forgotten. Okay, that's all. Thank you for limiting the rush.
And that's just everybody, I sent everybody a draft copy of the twenty twenty-one, so everybody has the annual report. The draft, just look it up. And many thank you.
Even later than me. Do it later than me.
Thanks to uh Pat and Marty for comments and feedback. Appreciate all of them.
Let's circle back on that anyway. So I I, uh, Karen, I know that you're interested in comments. I'll I'll open it to the public. Any members of the public have any questions?
I'm Karen Burris, and I live at Southern Colonial Court. Um, I understand you're gonna be taking a look at the fence ordinance. I don't know what you've been asked to review or consider. I would just like to point out that I've had to use it recently. It seems very outdated. It refers to a lot of things that no longer exist, like it refers to a fence permit. Now you need a zoning permit. On the borough website, there's actually two versions of the ordinance that show. One say that says that the fee is ten dollars, the other one says there's a fee per linear foot. Neither of those are true if what you really need is a zoning permit, and we know that costs fifty or a hundred dollars. So there's a lot of stuff in that ordinance that just seem very old and outdated, so I hope you'll review the overall ordinance and. That steps can be taken to get it.
For what, for what's worth, I think you need to. I think you you go through zoning first, because they have to make sure no variances are required. Then you go to construction for your your fence permit, but I could be wrong. That's the way of sharing. But no, nobody, Karen, nobody was able to explain it. You you couldn't get, the the issues you're talking about right now, they still said neither, that nobody in the in the borough's been able to clarify for you. What the process is, why there's two things that seem to contradict each other, um, how it works, right?
Yeah, I'm being careful, saying I'm not supposed to get too specific. Like I said, the current state of the ordinance, as a resident trying to use it, I attempted to follow the information in the ordinance. Which did not lead me down the right path.
So, so that happens a lot, because the ordinances can be complicated, and then some of them are a little clumsy.
Yeah.
But but, you know, when that happens, you know, people spend a lot of time with Joe and Nick and asking questions and getting them answered. But you've asked those questions and you've not gotten answers to the, to what you, what you just presented as being open. That's just not your interpretation. Nobody has given you a better interpretation from the borough. Right?
Right.
Okay, as to the elements that you just said, I I think those are indisputable, to the extent that they're confusing, they need to be fixed. I don't think there's much of a question as to that. The issue bigger than that, but your stuff you just mentioned, I think, if that's how it sits, that that's gotta get fixed.
Okay, yeah, it mentions like you can contact the the construction official. But like that, I think it's the old process before we had shared services. So, um, like I said, I would just ask that as you're reviewing, I don't know what the Borough Castle has asked or is thinking about changing. But what I'm pointing out is that having attempted to use it, there seem to be a lot of old incorrect information in the ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kott. Can I just ask that um, that the 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 issue with regard to the fence is kind of multifaceted? And so, somebody in building and zoning should be able to say, in order to get a fence in Fairhaven, A, B, C, D. And if that process of somebody figuring that out hasn't started. What we've been asked to do is to review some other issues in greater depth, which we can't. Whatever this discussion is, we'll then go back to the council.
You're talking about a process.
Karen's talking tonight about something different. It's been in other materials. And those issues don't require our our input. A resident should be able to say, what do I do for a fence, and get the A, B, C, D, E. And and so if that exists, it, somebody should figure it out and and help Carolyn understand it, and then let us know, so we know that it's taken care of. Eventually, that's gonna have to get looked at if it isn't. There's just no reason to delay on that element of it, I I'm just suggesting. Because the process from us is feedback. Feedback's gonna go to council, council decides what it wants to do. It would then talk to the planning board with regard to the ordinances, then that would go back to the council, and then that process of adopting. So there's a bunch of steps, and if i- if the simple steps of how you do it is not really clear, we may be able to run that contemporaneously, is what I'm saying.
I'll just say, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yep. And just the other thing, I think that actually one other thing that is needed is clarification between new fence versus fence replacement. A lot of the materials that are presented seem to describe new fence, and then if you're doing fence replacement, I think it's not clear.
I I don't know that, I think that's a stick your wicket. Um, I'm not sure that there is a difference between a replacement and a new fence. Because there are a lot of fences in town that are in place, that may not be where they're supposed to be. And I, for decades, I know that people have actually propped up fences and not taken them down because they've been told they can't be furnished. There was one famously on Hans and and River, and it was up, I mean, it was, it was literally paper thin by the time it just collapsed.
Right. I would just say the information, it all seems, since I don't talk about a new fence, of what position it would be in. And there's no mention of this also applies to fence replacements, or, like, the word replacement is not anywhere.
So, so for a long time, people have sort of suggested that the ordinances should be easier to read and 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 to use. And, you know, th- there are arguments on all sides, and and, you know, it's complicated to build a house. But fences are a little different. You know, uh, people tend to call a fence contractor and wanna go forward. They don't have an architect, they don't have an attorney, they don't need an engineer. And so there are certain elements of the ordinances that should be easier and more user-friendly than others, and this is certainly one that should be easy for you, for you, for anybody to follow. And so I I I think that the observations that you've shared with the council are important. And, you know, I I'm sure it won't be as fast as 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 it could be, but we try and get it looked at and clarified for the benefit of everybody.
Great, and just for one example, um, like if you, you can Google, you can go to our website, Google fence or fence replacement. You only get a hit to the ordinance and also to the ZPA form, which I previously shared, I find is really hard to use. There's no other instructions. Um, if you go to a little sober website and do the same search, you get it. Like two-page instead of instructions with the form, and I think that's kind of what you're talking about.
That's exactly what we need, and and, you know, that that's the kind of thing that the planning board should work with council on. And I I think that sounds like a really, really good project for twenty twenty-three as soon as I'm on.
Correct, and then to that point, like putting up a fence, it's not, um, it's probably something I'll do once in my life. I know nothing about it. You know, once I'm done, I'm probably never gonna do it again. Like, the the expectation of what people know has to be really low, you know?
Right, right, totally agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Pat's out the door. Yes. Uh, so, so, uh, so I know that they're. So so I, so I know that they're closed across the street and I know it's absolutely freezing out. But I have a fire pit and I have wood and I have, I have, I have a lighter.
There is a Christmas party going on at night at Columbus right now. And the bars open.
But what I want is a nice place to post Michael Irene if you do it. My pleasure. Yeah, are we still recording? Are all the official council people and council people elect out of the room?